I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got everybody here for that forum. Changes to the regular agenda.
Right, let's see, Lucas, you had one change.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could add a 13(c) resolution declaring insufficient protests. We just need you guys to actually approve the resolution for that one. So, that's it.
Anything else? Okay, 13(c), we'll have that then. All right. Any other changes? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to accept the regular agenda with said change.
Motion to accept.
Motion, can I get a second?
Before we discuss your motion, hang on. Did we take anything out of the consent?
We're not there yet.
That's the next item.
This is on the regular agenda.
Yep.
I will make a second, please.
Second. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda.
The next one here, may I only ask me if we could have number or layer D, CHS purchase agreement moved to the regular agenda.
All right, let's move that to 19.5 then. All right, any other changes to consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item D.
Okay, Stephanie makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, any changes to the city council meeting minutes from April 1st? Not for a motion to accept the April 1st minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the April 1st 2024 minutes.
Stephanie makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Sorry, there's a second, okay. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, council meeting minutes from April 15th. Any changes, corrections to that?
I didn't see anything move, so I will make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes from April 15th.
Okay, Naomi makes a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie does a second, all right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, just, we got a problem with the live stream, so I'm gonna stop the recording and reset the thing to see if that gets it going.
Okay.
Can we confirm that the microphones are working?
If I can get to the live stream, yes, I can.
Yeah.
Usually the lights aren't on.
Yeah, usually the lights aren't on.
One of the microphones doesn't have, the LED doesn't work.
Okay. Talk to the parks about this.
So, my, I'm coming here just because face-to-face is much easier sometimes than email and the way things are relayed, even though like the whole purchasing process of this and trying to work with the city has been frustrating in having communication. We have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday at 4 o'clock with the park board. It would be kind of nice to see the planner there so he understands like what's going on in his community, I guess. So, and also, I feel like this road is imperative to parking, potentially working with the park district and creating an option for future parking for these lots, because if we're talking about redeveloping Main Street, there's very limited amount of parking available for these future construction building, you know, projects that go on here. And this is, you know, an entire site that should be looked at as a whole, especially the park district being a city, you know, not related to the city, they're a separate entity, they are a taxing, you know, entity of the community and I just feel like we should all work together and make sure that, you know, that proper communication is had and proper plans for future parking is had. And if this is a one-way, then I have to come in from the north to get to my property. Am I able to drive on the park's property? Is there an easement for this lot to drive on there? I don't know. I mean, I just want to make sure that we have proper communication and everybody's understanding what's going on.
Have you had communication with Jim about this prior to this meeting?
So, I was just in Jim's office for another thing, you know, I brought up this property and I did mention something about parking and, you know, needing to work together. I think maybe I've said that a couple times. I've said it to Jase and so I was just surprised because I didn't know anything about this and we called CHS right away. They didn't know anything about it, you know, so it's like everything, you know, it's just, I think CHS would have let the buyer know that there's a one-way going in on the property if they hadn't known about it. So, it's just, it is frustrating and that's why I'm here, just to state that and just hopefully somebody can represent the city at the 4 o'clock meeting.
You're making an assumption that CHS would let a future buyer know that, that's an assumption right now, right? Now, when I talked to you, that, you know, when you were in the process of purchasing that piece of property, that was my major concern is that alley right there, you know, who really owns it and what's gonna go on. I, until you sent me that email today, that PDF file, I'd never seen their plan. And so, I'm at least one other member of, you know, city council that has never seen that from the park board.
Yeah, and as far as that goes, like I was just told that there was communication with council, you know.
Okay.
So.
So, not all of us.
Okay, well, and you know what? I'm not gonna always be right. I'm just, it's frustrating when I have to problem solve everything because I'm not getting the full story on things. So, I respect all you guys and your jobs and all that and I am just trying to represent, I guess, like my frustrations and what my, maybe my expectations are too high. So, that's just where that comes from, is all.
Have you had a meeting with the park board at all about that potential improvement?
I just found out about it today. So, this all kind of went down very quickly today. This was the last minute thing to show up here and I, my goal is just to express my feelings and try to get a representative at the meeting on Wednesday at 4 o'clock.
Where are you guys meeting at?
I'm not sure yet, but I can text you.
I don't think that's unreasonable, but I think the park board would probably have more information on that.
Absolutely.
And then I would ask if they reached out to CHS. Obviously, that is all of them thing.
Well, I, yeah, I think, like my goal, when I bought, or when, like my parents are the ones that are buying it, we're gonna work together. We don't know how the construction and all that is gonna go yet, but like our goal is to put that access way there and utilize it in a way where we can maximize parking, because obviously parking is an issue down here. And so, you know, that is my biggest concern is what does future parking look like? We, you know, Jase mentioned there was a parking study that's being worked on.
Downtown area, not parking.
Well, oh.
It's a downtown neighborhood study, so it's a focus on kind of this main area and then up in the Lakeview area for downtown. And we have funding through MetroCog for that to help us plan that whole area, so.
So, not necessarily parking.
It's not focused just on parking or anything, it's just on really that, it's a neighborhood plan.
Streets oriented of how connecting the old parts of town into the new.
Okay. Well, I do think, you know, I don't know what our timeline is on building on this property. It could be sooner, it could be later, depending, but, you know, obviously parking is gonna be a big, you know, conversation when we're looking at that, because I know that the city does want it to have a downtown feel, buildings to the sidewalks potentially, where are people gonna park, you know? This alleyway could be one of the few options for that, if the park board is willing to work with the owners and the city on that, so.
I can attend the, I can attend the meeting too if you'd like. It sounds like it's primarily a conversation between you and park district, but I'd be happy to attend too. Do you know where it's at yet, Chelsea?
No, I'll, I'll.
Just let me know.
Yeah, and the reason I, I think it's really important for the city, again, to repeat myself, is just future planning and what parking is gonna be available for these lots, because obviously we want it to look nice and if we have to put parking lots in here, might be an issue, you know, depending on how we can work it out, so.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Mr. Mayor, I can look up to see where the ownership is of the alley or who has control of the alley, to see if it's city or if it's park or who actually owns it, but then obviously I don't represent you, but I would recommend getting the abstract for the property and seeing what easements they have and get a title opinion done, then you can know for sure.
Well, and I don't know the laws on easements, but I'm hoping that an easement doesn't give that person full control, that we can work together as a team.
Well, it'll be limited, I mean, the easement should be limited to whatever it's for, if it's for access, if it's for sewer, if it, you know, something like that.
So, any improvements would definitely need to be approved by the property owner, I would assume.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, if it exists, it's gonna have language in there, what they can and cannot do and what rights you have as the.
CHS is looking for that information, so they're looking into whether they ever signed an easement.
Sure.
Currently, according to the GIS, that empty lot, property line looks on the GIS like it goes to the tree line across the road, across, across the alleyway. So, CHS is looking into whether they ever signed an easement.
Yeah, it happened quickly, so we're just trying to get to the bottom of it as quickly as we can and that's why we're here, so.
All right, anything else?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have anything I wanna chat about this evening? Okay, move along, Sheriff's update, these guys will be next time around. Brent, you got the special assessment policy update for us?
Yeah, the main thing on that, this is just for like myself, Cory and Jeff, if anybody has feedback or Jim on the assessment policy, right now we've been looking at load factoring, that's been our primary area of emphasis to look at. The concerns have really been in regards to load factoring, really in just regarding streets, not water sewer, just streets. That's the component that we've been looking at with the policy. Our goal has been to really try to simplify it and try to make it a little easier to understand and not have it be so overwhelming. Like right now, our policy has some pretty high numbers for load factoring to where some property uses get hit harder than others. So, we're looking at seeing how we could adjust that or how that could be applied equitably. We've really been trying to find a one-size-fits-all type solution. Right now, I'm also looking at, and just met with Jeff earlier today to talk briefly about it and I've talked to Cory briefly about it. We're starting to look at, is there, does it make sense to have load factoring for one as a whole? You know, for all projects, or do you do a local improvement type load factoring and then a regional improvements load factoring? So, we're looking at those. I just wanted to give the council a quick heads up of what we're working towards and where our primary time has been spent towards trying to find a solution. Like I said, we've been working with the interstate. Matt and I, Jeff and Cory have been talking that through and hashing that through. Thought it'd be something a little easier to hash through and it's not a simple endeavor. So, we, like I said, we're still going through it. Hopefully, we'll have a little more information here in the next meeting or two, but that's where we're at on it. So, like I said, just wanted to give an update, because we haven't given an update for a little while on this one, so let you know where we're at.
Um, I did go to the park board meeting as directed from the last meeting that we had and tried to find out what they thought was fair for a load factoring. They didn't, they didn't really give me much insight on that. I told them that they were currently sitting at a five for a load factoring, but they really didn't voice an opinion, so I just thought I'd give that update to you guys on that.
And if we, if we are, if we're reviewing the policy, I'd like to propose we have some review and discussion on the 3.3.7, section two, I think I briefly mentioned it, to you, Brenton, which is the assessments for regional streets. I think, I think we need to take a look at that language, because the words we're using and the distinctions in those sections have big consequences when creating the districts. And so, I think we need to take a look at that. I don't know if we wanna, will you be having future meetings to discuss the policy or?
Right now, I'm just wanting to touch base update, if the council would like to discuss it more, they can, or if you guys want us to vet through it and hash through it.
I think we need to vet through it.
Internally first and then bring it through, we could do that too. Just looking if you guys, if the rest of the council, if you guys want us to hash through that or what you'd like us to do there.
You mean of this section?
Well, yeah, if you're, you're asking if we can look into it, would the council like us to look into that? If you, if the council would, we could look into that and vet through it a little bit and then the next time we bring it forward to the council, then we could.
Eighth, County Road 17 to Nelson and then the Nelson Drive component of it. So, we're bringing back a project to you of unlimited scope. It's Eighth Avenue from County Road 17 through Fourth Street to Fifth Street to the Lagoon access. The Fifth Street completion component, we're recommending removal of that. That can be installed with the Sparks addition as part of the local improvements to try to keep this more of a regional. My opinion is still that this is a collector's street on the half-mile line, so per the policy, per the guidance of a lot and part of that section that also relates from reference earlier is that half-mile in each direction. So, we, the district that we're recommending is the north side of the Visto addition up to Wall Avenue 17 to Past Green 27, is what we're bringing back to you as for that, that area, so.
So, Jim, what would be different from this recommendation for the one that we started with, staking out Fifth?
The district remains the same, but the scope of the project is, has been reduced to remove Eighth between 17 and Nelson and then remove Fifth south of Eighth. So, we do have a scope of worksheet that was attached to this just to kind of show the project that we were looking at proposing. If you can bring up the.
Bring up the second sheet.
That one, yep. So, the project that's being proposed, the project would start at Nelson Drive, go through all the way to the Lagoons and then the north-south component there is a little bit difficult to see on there, would just be for a shared use path and connectivity in that area with pedestrians. So, there is some issues with drainage in that part of the world with the shared use path, so that would clean that up and provide for some pedestrian activity kind of around that 17, Nelson, Eighth, where things get kind of tight at that intersection.
And so, the sidewalk addition north to Park is new in the project?
We're starting over with the project, so this is what we're proposing. So, what we've done in the past was dissolved and gone. This is what we're bringing forward to you now.
Okay.
I wanted to make sure that the scope will work, that we were all on the same page as that, because there was some contention as to if there was stuff added or if there was stuff removed or anything the first time around. So, with the, with the dissolving of the last district, I want to start with a clean, clean slate. So, I guess my, do you want to start, Mr. Mayor, with a district? Do you want to start with the scope? Or do we want the scope to meld into the district or how do you want to handle that?
Why don't we go with the scope, just so everybody's on the same page with that.
I can't either.
Can you not get the solo either?
It's not pulling up on ours like when you went there.
Do you think it's connectivity or?
It's gotta be connectivity.
Okay, yeah, I couldn't get it to open either.
None of the files that previously available are available.
Say again?
Versus open and use.
Oh, let's see.
Some of us have a Mac, Matt.
I don't have that ability.
It did work. Did you have the open as an option when you right-click? Go there. There's a drop-down.
Oh, here we go.
Yep, it opened then.
I got nothing.
Good job, Matt.
Okay, I got it.
So, we don't have the specifics on this project yet as far as what we're gonna do for lane width or an estimate or any of that stuff. That's the next phase after we create the district, we can direct it to the report. We'll take the comments that we got from the last one. Probably, since the district got bigger from the last project, if the district is approved as presented, we'll go through and do another public input period, do another comment, do another public input meeting, take comments. And then this one, the district would have to have a resolution in necessity because the petitioning bodies of Sparks and Eldorado do not have the majority of the land in there, so. This one would have a petition process.
Yeah, so this gets it back to, similar to what it was when we first started this.
Yep.
Question, similar to what it was when I first started this, with the removal of the lift station and all that as part of this project that is now out of here?
Gone.
Okay.
Nelson, Eighth between the, between Nelson and that and the lift station, separate project actually, next on the agenda.
Okay, other questions here? Jim, is there anything else you wanted to talk about on this one?
Just if you had any questions on it.
No. Like I said, you know, we got it back to what it was for the original recommendation with the exception of that one change in there. I think that's where we probably, you know, we should have landed here in the first place. You know, we're just, it's been almost two months that we've been on this and this is, like I said, we need to let the special assessment commission do their job, so. I don't know, what about the rest of you guys? Jeff, what's your thoughts on this one?
If, if they would have took out the lift station component and the sewer right away, I would have had no problem with this right away. I know it, it shortens the scope of the project a lot and it would have been a lot easier to swallow. We wouldn't waste nearly as much time.
Stephanie?
My position on the scope, which I know we're gonna maybe discuss again or the district boundaries hasn't changed.
Good. Naomi, thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm really sorry, Jim. I, I don't agree with the verbiage of the road, so. I, I do think it's a local improvement to help Sparks. Just, I already mentioned, I, I don't agree that it's not on the comp plan, so that's just, that's my feelings.
Sarah?
I stand per the original.
Okay. Jim, is there anything else you want to add on that? I mean, otherwise, I mean, I don't see any reason why we don't create the district, get on with it, so. Do you want to make that motion?
We don't have an issue with creating the district, do we?
Wouldn't think so. Don't we get started with it? Jim, unless you got any concerns on that?
So, the district would be water sewer, Stormont Street improvement, district number 2024-4. Eighth Avenue, Nelson Drive to Fifth Street, and then it has the shared use path component in there. But, like I said, we, we received a lot of public comment on this, but we'll go through that process at the end of this.
All right.
I think that's what you guys wanted when we, when you had amended the policy to add some more of that, of that public input. And we can take that, that's what got us to this point and represent it.
What do you guys want to do? Let's say we go ahead and create the district and let this process play out. Do you want to make a motion?
Jeff, are you on board with creating the district?
Well, the crap of the matter is, I, I was in favor of the previous district we had and my hand is being forced right now. I, I am not in favor of moving the boundary all the way down to 100th, which is where we were at a few weeks ago. That definitely is wrong. I definitely couldn't make a smaller district because we would have gotten a lawsuit doing that. That just was completely wrong in every aspect. And now that the district that we had has been dissolved, I don't see a way of getting back to that. So, I, I am at a loss. I am gonna be the bad guy. And it shouldn't have ever been that way, so I will have to live with it.
So, yes, I'll, I'll be in favor of that. If you want me to make the motion? Uh, what is the name of this?
Water sewer, water sewer, Stormont Street improvement, district 2024-4. It's XX on there, because I know if you guys are gonna make the motion or not. And we got another one on here and I didn't want to have a placeholder and just get confused things, so it's, it would be four. That's the next one.
Okay, and I'll let you name off the boundaries then too, just to make sure it's clear and has been recorded.
So, the boundary would be County Road 17 to the, is that the half-mile line? Wall Avenue to the north property line of Visto addition.
And then I know I can't tell our special assessment committee what to do, but I can make a strong suggestion that you use Matt and Jim and make sure that wherever you have your meetings is allowable for the time for them to join as well, because you guys are gonna need to do your job on this one. I, and I apologize for that. So, I'll make that motion.
All right, Jeff makes a motion. Can I get a second on that?
Yeah, I'll second that. I, I think it's a happy medium from where we were at previously and I realize that some people. And I realize that some people win and some people lose, but ultimately we have to do what we can do.
Then again, this is the special assessment commission will be able to work this well too, so. All right, Brenton, I'm gonna roll call this one just because I know it's contentious, so. Sarah?
Aye.
Naomi?
No.
Stephanie?
No.
Jeff?
Yeah.
And the mayor votes and he affirms it, so it passes. Move on to the next one.
So mailers will be sent out. The meeting will be scheduled. And I think that we should do a motion to direct engineer to prepare an engineering report or to modify the other one just so we can have the cost and layout for the public input meetings. We will bring that report back to the council until we've had that meeting to incorporate those comments into it prior to approval. But that's where I think it should go. So, because cost is gonna be a big one when it comes time to special, when it comes time to discuss this with the public and get comment on the cost.
Jim, tell me again what you wanted. That was the engineering report?
Resolution, resolution directing the engineer to prepare the report.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make that motion on the resolution directing the engineer to prepare the report.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion. Can you get a second?
Sure, I'll second the resolution directing the engineer report.
Okay, Naomi does a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, all right, everybody. Let's move on to the last one.
Really quick, before you, just to give you an update. It looks like the live streaming is lagging quite a bit, but it is recording, is what it's looking like. For the teams meeting during your discussion, we got it working here, hopefully to where it did catch discussion right before the motion. So, just wanted to let you know, but I think the way it's looking like, I'm thinking that the recording should work, but live stream is slow. So, just wanted to give you a heads up as we're trying to pay attention to that too.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to the last one. Jim, you got this one?
All right, Mr. Mayor and Council. Lift station number one, the existing lift station outside of the city shop and the city hall is antiquated, getting close to the end of its service life. It is kind of a hodgepodge of a system. There's two wet wells consisting of an old wet well and a new one, and it surcharges. And it's in a bad location. If you've ever been over there, it's right on the edge of the road. And the city actually had to put jersey barriers up on the edge of it to keep semi's and cars from driving up on top of the, on top of the structure itself. So, with the second connection to Fargo being imminent to start the process of decommissioning the lagoons, that lift station needs to be rebuilt. It can't be rebuilt in the area where it's at due to constructibility issues with proximity, right-of-way constraints along those lines. So, with the Sparks addition coming along and being just south on Nelson Drive, there's actually a piece of land that's dedicated for that, that new replacement lift station that would be a, the final master lift station to pump the remainder of Fargo, or remainder of Horace to Fargo through a future forest main along Luther Boulevard and across and up Forty Fifth, Fifty Seventh and across to Seventy Sixth Avenue to Forty Fifth Street. So, lift station number one does take sewage from stations two, three, four, five, seven, and not six. So, it's a, it's a, it's a large service area for the lift station. So there are existing residents in Arrowood, Northwood, Southwood, Third Street, Four Street, the proposed Sparks addition, and part of Lost River. So Lost River and the Chestnut Ironwood areas are interconnected with the connection at Deer Creek. So they can go either way. They can either go to the lagoons or they can go to Fargo at Deer Creek. The connection at Deer Creek has an eight hundred gallon per minute cap. That's the maximum amount of sewage that can be sent to Fargo through that connection. That's why we need the second one, is to take that additional flow. So, the district you'll see is quite large and basically is Seventy Sixth Avenue south to the diversion minus the area around high school, Lakeview Heights and Cub Creek First Edition. By the high school is lift station number eight. Eight's the station that pumps the majority of the sewage to Deer Creek. So that's always gonna go to Deer Creek. Cub Creek has a lift station there that pumps over to eight, so that one's always gonna have to go that way. But the area south of that, there's good planning to go to Forty Fifth Street with that. So, the district is, it's not super easy to define, I guess. It's on the south, the FM diversion boundary follows the embankment along the east side, south of One Hundred. Goes over to the city limits on the east side up to Eighty Third Street, which is in the, between Cub Creek and Cub Creek Second Edition. Crossed on Eighty Second, up Lakeview. Crossed on Eighty First to Seventeen, up Seventeen to Seventy Sixth Avenue. West to the diversion road, follows the diversion road down to the Cheyenne River, back through to the FM diversion. So, that's where we, where we lay with this project. It, it's, like I said, it's a combination of existing users, those that are currently in the area that are on septic but could potentially go here or included in here, just so we have them in the district. That would be the area Sunset, Robin. Area east west of Maple Lakes and then Country Acres is in here as well. So, you might say that Country Acres, Robin, Sunset were assessed for part of lift station number, I can't remember which one it is, but the Hundredth Avenue Forest Main, and there was a portion of it that they were assessed for. So, that area pumps to Ten, which is in Vistos, which pumps into the lagoon. So Ten will get intercepted to take it to One, or it'll just pump straight through the forest main over to Forty Fifth Street. So, if you go to the page number three in the memo, we have that area showing where the existing lift station number one is on the north side. This is where Nelson Drive will have to get reconstructed to relay that pipe. Right now, the pipe flows to the north to the station, but we're gonna redirect the flow to the south so that all of Third, Fourth, and Nelson will come south to the new station. Eighth will be reconstructed at the same time as this. And then we have the inset, or the, I guess it's an inset there, shows the overall layout that's being proposed as of right now. You'll see in your agenda that we have a request for service with Fargo. So, the exact routing isn't there, or this may or may not be the exact routing, but this is what we have discussed with them. We're still working on identifying landowners and that type of stuff, but we're just trying to get the ball rolling and try to be out in front of this. So, it comes across, if you look at the inset, it comes across on Luther. Parallels the Saint Benedict Sewer Association, Forest Main to, from Saint Benedict's to Veterans Boulevard, up Veterans Boulevard to Seventy Sixth Avenue across. Where it terminates on Forty Fifth Street is to be determined. Just depends on how far Fargo comes, how far south Fargo comes with their piping.
So are we gonna have to, we can use that existing forest main that we've got from, that's sitting out there on One Hundredth right now to hook into that? Or do we have to put down something new there?
So Ten, so if you look at, so Ten at Vistos goes straight up into the lagoon along the Saint Benedict's. So we would intercept that, and we'd have to install new over to Forty Fifth Street. But we could intercept the two, or we could pump it back through, through to lift station number one. We haven't got into that, into that part of it yet. We just, we're starting the district. There's been some discussions. I don't want to steal too much of the administrative thunder. But there have been some discussions with the city of Fargo to try to get that moving, knowing that the lagoons are kind of, they're kind of on borrowed, I shouldn't say borrowed time. They're functional, I'm always sure of that. It's just that sometimes they have an odor and other stuff, so.
But we also know that they will fill up. I mean, we've just made good use of the resources that we've got right now, but at some point we will run out.
Yeah, and the, and the amount of wastewater that goes to Fargo through Deer Creek has been increasing. It rains, it gets to be more, but we're using just a, less than a half a percentage of that. But we have to plan because there's a lot of infill to be done north of Seventy Sixth Avenue, and that's where that wastewater will come from.
Can we, like, use any, like, Prairie Dog funding for, I mean, that's for infrastructure?
For this project?
Yeah, or like, what's the plans with that money?
This one would be, how we've been approaching regional projects is we've covered twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent.
That's what we've been tackling, same thing on, like, Prairie Dog. We're trying to utilize, like, Prairie Dog for projects like that, the cost share. Also the connection to Fargo, which Jim mentioned, and we'll talk about just briefly later. That one, we're trying to do without doing a district for that. So we're trying to use, like, diversion settlement dollars, could use sales tax, could use the utility fund, could use Prairie Dog. So we're trying to use some of those different resources we have that, for that next connection to Fargo. This one would be treated, like a lot of our other regional projects, like I said, where we're gonna cost share. At least that's how we've approached other projects in areas like, you know, like this, not just specifically sewer project, but road projects too.
Jim, maybe this is a really stupid question, so forgive me, but I'm wondering, like, this has to happen, like, now? Because, or is this because Sparks is going in and now we don't have the capacity? Because I, like, none of this ever came up until we started talking about Sparks going in. And so I kind of was not really aware that we, until we started talking about this Eighth Avenue project, I was really kind of clueless as to why.
So, Sparks, we've been planning and discussing replacement of lift station number one for quite a while. The Sparks addition identified some areas where there maybe wasn't some depth that they would like for building. So it threw out the idea of a new lift station. And then it provided an avenue with the location along Nelson for the station and the right-of-way for Luther to actually get the infrastructure installed in city right-of-way and kind of kill two birds with one stone. So, if Sparks were not being developed, probably wouldn't be talking to you now. But being that it is being developed with the need for sewer and providing the areas where we need to go, that's how it came to be at this point.
Okay. I thought so, but I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that.
So, if we had proceeded with the Eighth Avenue district as, and it's an original format, that was just to put some infrastructure in, right, from Nelson? So, I mean, what is, what is the timeline of having to move the, I guess, I mean, kind of what Naomi said too. I recognize that we're calling this the original district. This is like almost the entire city that's involved in it. So I, I mean, if we were gonna be able to proceed, which is putting infrastructure in for Sparks and not, and not doing the lift station right now, like, pardon me, is inclined to say, I'd like to see what we get for Prairie Dog funding in the next state budget cycle before moving forward. I mean, to me, this is a perfect, this is a perfect example of what we could use for Prairie Dog funding, which would probably will get a significant more amount of money in twenty twenty-six. I know this, this is a lot to digest. For me, I don't know that I'm prepared to vote on this tonight. I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I didn't know that this was even a thing before we started talking about amending the Eighth Avenue project.
Because Eighth got convoluted with the discussion of lift station. We never included the lift station in Eighth.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, like, if we had just put the infrastructure in like we had discussed in Eighth, you know what I mean? If we had left it in its original format, what, what would the timeline have been on this portion then? Do you know what I'm saying?
It's still gonna have to go.
But I mean, in relation to Sparks being developed, one would have had to have gone, because we weren't going to do it.
So if you put a lift station in Sparks to service only Sparks, you're gonna be gaining a lift station and then having a problem that you're just kicking the can down the road.
Was that what we were gonna do? If we had just put the infrastructure in from the lift in that original Eighth district? I mean, I'm just trying to understand.
So when it came to light, the developer wanted certain depths for a certain type of product up in that area, that's when this lift, that's when the lift station came to be. That's when, as a staff, we sat down and said, this makes a ton of sense to combine two lift stations into one. Get rid of an aging infrastructure that's could or could not be on borrowed time. And get it to a place where you're planning for the future of being proactive for what's coming.
Because we've been talking about that lift station one forever.
Yeah, we actually changed order, we actually changed order in rehab in the two thousand eighteen mining project because when they went to, what happened in there?
I remember that.
There was a fitting that was, a fitting that was broken on the inside where the forest main comes in. They took the cover off and there was white, there was mesh showing. There was steel inside there showing. And we actually changed order in rehabbing that, that station. And kind of had to call in a favor to get it rehabbed to the best of their ability because one contractor looked at it and said, I'm not gonna.
Wait, they weren't even gonna bother with it?
They weren't even gonna touch it.
And, and then we, we managed to get them talked off the ledge and they came in and they did rehab it. But it definitely is on, on borrowed time. And, I mean, we're, the city's up to sixteen lift stations. So, and there's probably another eight, eight in the plant, master planning for the remainder of the city. So if you can take one out, put one in, kill two birds with one stone, it makes a lot of sense, especially with it being a master like it is.
And I know there are a lot of properties that are on septic. Would, I mean, as an initial idea, are we looking at TAF fees like we did?
Certainly could. So, when we, when we did the Hundredth Avenue sewer, we had assessed them at a twenty-five percent because there's the four areas of sewer. There's the, this local portion, which is your sewer service line, which is a beach coming from your house out to the main. There's the main portion of it, which conveys it down, down the line. It goes to the lift station, it has to pump it somewhere, and then it goes through the forest main that pushes it to where it needs to go. So being that, say, Sunset and Robin would really only need the Forest Main portion of it because they're gonna need their own lift station at some point, maybe we're a twenty-five percent assessment. And then I, I can't remember if Country Acres was a fifty percent or if it was a twenty-five percent as well. Plus there was a septic tank acknowledgement through that, through the assessment district, so that was reduced on that too. So, it's definitely been a discussion that's been had as far as ways of accounting for the, the septics. But that's just.
We kind of set a precedent with these TAF fees, or whatever you want to call them, for certain areas of town. You know?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend basically locking in saying, oh, we're gonna do this one approach or that approach.
We have the ability to talk about this later.
At this phase, it's, it's just, here's the project, here's the district. And Jim could do the engineering report, get the numbers, and we could talk about some of those different things. But the concept of, like, using a TAF fee, but the city would have to carry that cost. So there's, those things are, it will be hashed through over time. It really isn't really the issue at hand right this discussion. I just, I don't want to downplay it. I just want to make sure we focus on.
I mean, as long as we can talk about it before we start, like, handing out bills to people, I want to make sure we're having that conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Part of the reason we're trying to get ahead of this is to, is to try to get, to secure some of that funding. We do have a project on the intended use plan for SRF. It may be a little quicker than what we had originally thought, but from a planning and timing standpoint, I don't think we can get too far ahead of something like this.
Jim, even by special assessment, let's say we started this thing, say August. All right, when are we gonna have to worry about actually picking up the funds on the special assessment?
It'd take you at least, yeah.
So, I mean, by that time, we should have more Prairie Dog funds. So I mean, that's what I mean, we can slide, we'd be ready to go at that point. So, I mean, I don't want to keep kicking the can down the road. We've been doing that before now. We need to get on with some of that stuff.
Yeah, so this has been talked about since two thousand eighteen, knowing that Deer Creek could only, could only supply eight hundred GPM for fourteen hundred units. There's always been.
I mean, the timeline just got moved up a little bit quicker than what we anticipated because of development.
In that area.
It's trying to be responsible for down the road here instead of having to do a, two lift stations, you do it in one.
Trying to be proactive on this.
I like that idea. It's cost-effective. And if we work on that infrastructure, I mean, at least, at least two years, potentially three, that does buy us some time to look at some additional funding and some potential state resources and things of that magnitude.
We can still go after some matching funds for this stuff too.
I like that.
Right.
We've got time to do that.
Yeah, and that's the big thing, is getting through the environmental, getting through the funding and kind of laying things out. We, I don't think there'll be any state water commission money. The way the city funded the water replacement and the connection to Castle Road, just.
We gotta try their avenues again.
But we really expedited that about, that went about as fast as we possibly could. And, and I don't see this one going as quickly, just, just because. I mean, there's just plenty of planning to do here, so.
Well, that's right. No, there's not the funding for sewer, like, water grants. There's not, there's not really grants in the state.
What is the backup in the event that lifts?
What is our backup in the event that lift station, the lift station that's aged were to go down? What is our option?
Portable pumps and a generator.
Yeah.
Seriously?
Yeah.
That's what I mean. It's, this has been an ongoing thing. We've been talking about it for twenty eighteen. I mean, we've known about this group.
So there's, I showed, I showed a couple of you a picture, but there's a, there's a T-fitting, I think it's a T, that the way we got it to stick on the existing pipe was we basically tap kind of chain into the wall of the structure to hold that fitting in place. So there's a chain wrapped around it, holding it, restraining it back to the existing wall.
Jerry rigging, I think, is the proper term for that one.
Making do with what we, what was happening.
If you're gonna do it, we should do it right, and I'd rather pay for one lift station instead of two.
Yeah, and then plus that we're thinking about being able to hook out to the Fargo connection when we get going with that. That's part of the, the deal here, too, so.
Yes, that would, this would be, this would be the last connection.
The last hookup, yeah.
Final flush. So the district boundary, like I said, on the east side, on the west side is, is Eighty-First Street. FM diversion comes around the embankment. I'd like you to amend the motion on the east side, which brought to my attention, just to double check that we're within, that we're at the city limits. So the east boundary would be the city limits, and then north would be eighty-third, eighty-second, Lakeview, eighty-first, to come here Route Six. So the only thing that I'm asking is just in the motion to say as presented, and then on the east side, just say the city limits.
City limits.
City limits on the east side.
So Jim, you just, you're talking about resolution to create the district. Did you also want to do an engineering report with this one?
We certainly can. I, I didn't know where the flavor was gonna be for as far as approving the district or not, so.
Say we, we need to do that anyway, so I'd say let's have that. It'll be a resolution.
The sooner we get that done, the more we have our plans and stuff prepared for.
Then some of these questions will get answered.
Yeah.
So we need to do it. So let's take them one at a time then. Somebody want to make a motion to create the resolution to create the district?
Make the motion.
Make some motion. Can I get a second?
The boundary on the, as shown on the west side and then the east side being the city limits.
City limits, yeah. Okay. Someone want to do a second on that one? Someone want to do a second?
You don't want it? Okay, I'll do a second on it.
All right.
I'm sorry.
All in favor to create the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, second one, resolution to create the engineering report. Get a motion on that one, please.
I'll make a motion to create the engineering report.
Okay. Sarah make some motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, Stephanie opposes. All right, resolution carries. Move on to number twelve. All right, Jim, you got that one?
I do, Mr. Mayor. So Water Sewer Stormwater Improvement District twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three dash three, U-Bet Drive, plans and specifications have been done for about a month on that project. We're waiting, we brought them to you for approval and direction to authorize the auditor to advertise for bids. So our schedules kind of got pushed back on this one. We'd like to approve plans and specs tonight, advertise the paper the fifteenth, the twenty-second, twenty-ninth, open bids on the thirtieth. We have, we had to include a milestone one completion, which would be October twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, and then a substantial completion of June, July twelfth, twenty twenty-five, with the final of July twenty-sixth. Milestone number one consists of everything minus final stabilization and landscaping. We found that sometimes that if these projects push too far into the fall with the landscaping and the plantings, take a bit of a hit. So rather than risk it, we're doing that. Plus, we're a little bit behind with just due to various things. But the plans have been done, like I said, for bottom line. So what I'm looking for is approving the plans and specs and then directing the auditor to advertise for bids.
Okay. Anybody got any questions on this one?
Did any of the project details change from the preliminary engineering report that was previously provided?
No, nothing that wouldn't have been flushed out through. So this, this is one of the projects that we've got thirty, sixty, ninety percent planner views on with the city at all, at all phases. Sarah's been able to attend those whenever she's been available. I think this one, you made all of them.
Yep.
So we had council and staff, and then our staff went through all these, so. Nothing out of the ordinary, I guess. I think it was added or removed. The, the state the same.
Sarah, anything on this one?
No.
I know you said it.
I did. We, we had really, really good discussion about drainage and obviously civil work and all of the supporting ordinances and updated everything for new codes and whatnot. I'm very satisfied with the layout on this project.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions on this one, concerns? All right, then I'm looking for a motion to accept the resolution approving plans and specifications.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay, can I make some motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does a second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, and the second one here, resolution directing auditor to advertise for bids. Can I get a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to thirteen. Jim, what do you got first there?
Uh, this is another resolution approving plans and specifications for Sixty-Fourth Avenue. This is one we've gone through that is gonna follow the same schedule as this, this project, as the last one, just prove U-Betcha. So we have everything the same except for the, actually, it pretty much runs right in line, runs right in line with that. So we did, from the report, we did change the extent of the project. So we had shown it to go to the city limits or to drain twenty-seven. We did cut that back, so it extends just, I forget, like, three hundred feet or four hundred feet east of Sixty-Sixth Street. So it goes up to the first residence on the south side, or we stop a little short of that and transition back into the section that's already there. This does have the sixty-second component that connects Deer Creek with Sixty-Fourth Avenue, and then sixty, sixty-six goes the rest of the way, so. A lot of, a lot of discussion was had with Deer Creek Estates folks to make sure that this project tied in with theirs. And then we also had some with another area that you're gonna see here shortly on the agenda, so Sunset Valley, having quite a large development just south of Sixty-Fourth.
So the Deer Creek gang are still good with this and the group, they're okay with what we came up with?
Okay. Yeah, so stormwater was the hiccup there.
Yeah.
When Deer Creek Estates was brought to the city council, they had a pond on the adjacent to County Road Seventeen, north of Deer Creek Parkway. They've kind of flopped the way they're gonna build that subdivision, so they're gonna build it on the south side, on the south side of Deer Creek and then go north. So there is a pond lot as part of Deer Creek Estates' third addition that was to discharge to Sixty-Fourth, over to Drain Twenty-seven. And provisions were made so that that isn't an open drain anymore, that they'll pump their pond into the city's storm sewer on the north side of Sixty-Fourth and run down to Drain Twenty-seven. So I'm not one hundred percent sure if the pond is gonna be gone completely from Deer Creek Estates' first addition, as they haven't provided anything other than second and third additions. But we at least are getting that stormwater discharge is being pumped into a pipe to Drain Twenty-seven.
We'll call it mosquito control.
Mosquito control.
Fair enough.
So if they want to continue with Deer Creek first, they're gonna have to replat if they want to remove that pond? They would have to re-submit a plot if they're removing the pond, right?
They would have to, or they could, yeah. That's what's been discussed.
Yeah, replat and rezone, because that is on Civic, I guess, with the new land use ordinance.
And the city can handle the runoff there then, if they don't have a pond there?
The one pond in Deer Creek Estates' second handles both.
Okay.
So they're to be interconnected. And that's, that's where we've worked closely.
There's a pipe between the two.
Yeah, that's where we worked closely with them with their discharge rate to get it into our, to get into the Sixty-Fourth Storm Sewer.
And all this over a culvert on the north side? They couldn't figure out if they could get?
I, I don't know if it, somehow the, the emphasis went from the north side to the south side.
Understood.
And change in ownership.
Well, right, there was a change in ownership, but that's the way it is.
All right, any other questions on this? For Jim? So we got three of them on here, Jim, right? The last one was that resolution for insignificant protests?
Oh, yes.
For C, okay. We'll start at the top then. Don't see any reason why we can't proceed with this. So resolution approving plans and specs. Is there somebody to make a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Stephanie makes a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Sarah does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. We'll move on to B, resolution directing the auditor to advertise for bids. Make a motion on that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Naomi did a.
Okay, Naomi did a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We'll go on to resolution for insignificant protest.
I'll make that.
Verify that, okay. Makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Stephanie does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, fourteen. Jim, you got that one?
All right, so the next one we have, Mr. Mayor, council, is Water Sewer Stormwater Street Improvement District. There is no street on this one.
Twenty, yeah.
It's Water and Sewer Improvement District twenty twenty-four dash one, Sixty-Fifth Avenue Water and Sewer. I might have got a little happy when I was typing that. We have a lot of water sewer storm streets. It just kind of flows.
You just cut and paste it off.
Probably filled it in for me. But anyways, so this is Sixty-Fifth Avenue. If you go to the memo, there is a location map to, as part of this preliminary engineering report. So when Southdale Farms Fourth was originally plotted, they did not plat the right-of-way for Sixty-Fifth Avenue. It is now being plotted as a Southdale Farms Eighth Edition. For Sunset Valley to, which is to the east of Sixty-Sixth Street to get their water and sewer service, they need this segment of pipe put in. So for the assessment district on this project, we have Southdale Farms Eight, the school, and Sunset Valley. Those are the three that are gonna be serviced by this, by this project. It's just the installation of water and sewer and some grading of the right-of-way. We aren't putting a street on top until it gets requested. Estimate for this project is around four hundred thousand dollars. I think it's three hundred ninety-nine thousand, what, four hundred? And it's, just like I said, it's the mains between connecting where they taught, stubbed out on Sixty-Sixth, connecting with where they stubbed out on Sixty-seventh, so. And there, those are the three locations. So to the top, we have Southdale Farms Eight, the eighth addition, to the south of West Farm Republic Schools. And to the right is the Sunset Valley addition that you guys will discuss here in a little bit. And that's basically the district boundary. If you go to the next map, I think that's the district.
Yeah, and we agree this is just water and sewer infrastructure, no streets at this time?
No streets, just some grading on the right-of-way, make sure green, so you don't have a pond out there. The district has already been created, so we don't have to do that tonight, but this is improvements to it. So the first thing I would ask is that you approve PER, and then the second is direct engineering, prepare the plans and specs.
Okay. Any questions for Jim on this one? I said it's just water and sewer in this, so. Sarah, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, this one looked good. We, we talked about it. There's a lot of work being done in that area, so it's an ideal time to get those pipes in, but we're not quite ready for roads yet. And so we want that to fill in a little bit before we get to that point, so.
That sounds.
I was happy with this one.
Any other questions? Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to accept the resolution approving preliminary engineering report.
Sure, I'll make the motion.
Okay, Naomi makes a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Resolution directing engineer to prepare plans and specs. Make a motion on that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Jeff does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Jim, you are up again.
All right, Mr. Mayor and council, we have bid opening for TMA dash TAC dash zero 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 nine, parentheses, zero five eight, parentheses, project control number two three nine four seven. Can you tell this is a federal project?
Because that's easy for you to say.
Right. So this is shared use path. We quit doing assigning phases because the funding got awarded out of sequence. So we gave up on the phasing, because we would have skipped five to go to six, right?
Yeah.
So just in order to, less confusion here. So we start.
Sounds like government, you know?
Well, we start north, we start at Casey's, and this extends up to the church.
It does connect to something though, right? It's not just two ends in the middle of nowhere?
Give them a little crap.
It's not quite that. It's not, it's no.
You mean to go into the east to the church or?
No, north.
North and south, right along County Seventeenth.
So essentially, this project connects the.
It'll provide a path for our little kids to go up and get ice cream.
Will it go all the way to the path that we already have north of Seventeenth? Not quite. We're getting there.
Goes to Eighty-Fourth. We're getting there.
We're getting there, okay.
That might be phase.
Technically phase seven, but next year, we got awarded for that project that connects this one to Seventy-Sixth Avenue.
No, good.
This is, this is the opposite side of Seventeenth.
Yes.
The west side got done previously. Now we're working on the east side for the connection between the schools and between the main corridors, so.
So the DOT is the funding source for this one, and they do the bid opening on. So the DOT had received bids on Friday, April twelfth, bids received from two contractors, Border States Paving and Northern Improvement Company. Bid tab is attached. The low bidder was Border States Paving with a bid of three hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred eighteen dollars, seventy-five cents. The other bid was Northern Improvement, which was five hundred thousand, six hundred fifty-five dollars, seven cents. And our estimate was around six hundred and fifty thousand. So this came in significantly under. I think part of that has to do with our plans have to be in at the end of the year, even for an April bid letting, or first part of the year. So at that point, concrete, we were still thinking concrete was gonna be, was gonna be higher, so.
I was gonna say, you did tell them it was concrete.
Yeah, very, very, we didn't even bid with asphalt, did we? So the first phase of the shared use path that was funded with recreational trails program money was constructed by Border States Paving. Wouldn't have any issues with that, so I don't have any. They've done lots of work out and lots of work out of ours, so. My recommendation would be to award the contract to Border States Paving in the amount of three hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred eighteen, three hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred eighteen dollars, seventy-five cents.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second. I'll go ahead.
No, Stephanie's got it.
I'll go to Stephanie.
She beat me to it.
There you go. All right, Jeff made a motion. Stephanie does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Jim, you're off the hook for a while. Jace, you're up.
Yes. All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is an application for a plat and rezone for Sunset Valley addition. As a reminder, this is a public hearing for both items, as well as a reminder that this is an application that was in process prior to the adoption of the new land use ordinance, which is effective April tenth, twenty twenty-four. So the applicant's provided a clear application for the subdivision and rezone of approximately fifty point five seven acres into, or, sorry, fifty point five seven acres. In addition to the plat request, the applicant's requesting a rezone from its current classification from egg to R-six high-density residential, which will be reflected on the future land use or on the new zoning map as compact residential. The proposed development features lot size ranging from roughly seventy-one hundred square feet up to twenty-seven thousand square feet for residential building lots. Within the development, the applicant's proposed several park and neighborhood community amenities, which have been identified as Lot Thirty-One, Block Four, and Lot Six, Block Two. There are proposed neighborhood-specific amenity areas to be owned and maintained by the homeowners association. With that, no new land dedication has been recommended by the Forest Park District. The Park District issued recommendation for payment in lieu of parkland dedication for a total of six hundred ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and four cents, which appears to be compliant with the rate at three dollars and eighteen cents per square foot. Lot Twenty-nine and Block Five and Lot Seven, Block Two have been identified for the stormwater retention. However, per the plat and application, the applicant proposes to own the above-mentioned lots and zone lots R-six. Staff would request that the applicant clarify their intentions by either having the city be awarded those properties via the plat. And additionally, staff would encourage the council to recommend that those lots be rezoned to public facilities. So staff has had several internal discussions regarding connectivity on this plat. The applicant is proposing a stub of Sixty-Second Street South to a property that was part of Willow Grove Edition. The only thing I would note on that, we are waiting on the CAD file from the Willow Grove Edition, just to make sure alignment is there. Worst-case scenario, we'll be back with a, a recommendation of street name change, turn that from either Sixty-Second to Sixty-first. But there will be no further changes there. This applicant has already made an amendment to their plat for right-of-way for Christian Boulevard on the southwest corner of the development. However, and so no changes to that. We still have that as a rec. However, and so, no changes to that, we still have that as a recommendation of approval or condition in there. The Horace Rural Fire District provided, and sorry, this is the old name.
What's the name of southern?
Southern Valley.
Southern Valley.
Southern Valley Fire Rescue provided comments following staff's request for agency comments, which we sent out on February sixteenth, twenty twenty four. The Horace Rural Fire, or the Southern Valley Fire Rescue wants to ensure that the turning radia are maintained throughout the proposed loop streets. And upon preliminary review of the construction plans, whereas they have been, however, that has been included as a condition of approval as well within this project. The proposed development features one major roadway identified as Sun Valley Boulevard. Sun Valley Boulevard is considered a north south street section, which would, provides two of the three proposed ingress and egress points to the development. The third would be that sub street to the south that we just talked about. Three loop streets have been provided within the development as well. On the plat, they appear as cul-de-sacs, however, the civil designs and in conversations with the applicants, there is proposed to be center isles that would direct the flow of traffic, which would make them into loop streets as well. Additionally, they have provided a pedestrian stub for a pathway to, at some point, connect into the pathway system proposed for drain twenty seven, as well as internal pathways connecting the residents to those public amenities and to streets like sixty sixth street south.
Jase.
Yes.
What is the size of those pathways that's proposed?
The ten foot shared use pathways.
Ten foot?
Yeah, so within the plat, and I can pull the plat up here on that, they are identified.
I just want to confirm, I also want to, the loops I'm happy with, because I wasn't happy with cul-de-sacs. So, I'm pleased to hear that they've made those changes and that we have connectivity in not two, but three locations. Go ahead, pull up that plat, I know the last time I looked at it, it wasn't updated.
Yeah, so we, we have talked with them, and they're, they're utilizing the center line of pathway as a block breakup as well, which within a long narrow parcel as they have an orientation, so this is north on this side.
Yep, which is acceptable, having, we, we agree that that, a shared use path can be utilized to break up long block lengths, but that shared use path needs to be wide enough, right?
Correct.
So, okay, good.
So, they have approximately twenty feet of right of way through here, and it expands through there. So, that's the first connection onto sixty sixth. That then loops in through a thirty foot right of way, and it narrows down in certain areas that connects folks back to the pond area through here, as well as it acts as a mid block shortcut.
It separates those lots nicely, too.
Yeah, I thought it framed it out fairly well. So, here's that stub that at one point would connect into this property to continue a pathway through into the drain twenty seven pathway system that is in our long range plan.
Good.
Through that. And that's kind of the, the extent of, of through the pathways that they have going on, as well as a sidewalk system throughout the development as well.
Where are the two ponds at?
So, two ponds would be through lot six.
Lot seven.
Lot seven.
Lot seven.
So, this one through here, and then this one right there.
That big lot is an entire pond?
Yes.
Are the ponds connected in any way, or are they standalone?
Go ahead, call.
So, we want to, we'll just wrap this up, if you've got any questions? I don't have actually anymore, much more, just, we'll give you the planning and zoning update.
Just go ahead and wrap it up, and we'll open up for public.
So, just to wrap up here, on March twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, planning and zoning commission will have a public hearing to review the submitted applications with ultimate vote of four oh to recommend approval, subject to the conditions that are outlined within your staff report, which would be section eight point one, which is the proposed motion to the city council. And with that, that's all I have, do you have any more questions for me?
No, forgive the interruption, Jase.
No, you're fine, applicant representative. I added to the staff report, so they are a little more in depth, so I apologize for the rambling.
We appreciate it.
I'll open up for a public hearing on the rezone and the plat, and start that. No, I had a, I had a chance to look at this, we're trying to roll in here, I don't know what, month or so ago, we kind of went through it. This looks fantastic, guys, this is kind of what we're looking at to have in the town. Just the layout and what they're going to do with this is phenomenal. And I think this will be an excellent mission at Horus, and I'm glad they're presenting it here this evening.
I think it's great, too, that they're, I mean, you guys are doing this without a city assessing, so.
Correct, correct.
Thank you for that.
To, to respond to the council members' question, yes, those two ponds are interconnected. There's a large, like sixty six inch diameter pipe that connects them two. So, they function as one. Will discharge through up to sixty fifth avenue, where the term storm connection is being constructed on sixty six, that existing storm there. We'll tie into that, it's a little old right that way, so there's no open digits or anything like that.
What's the size of the connection on sixty six, Jim? Or do you know?
It should be sixty six is what we're tying into, so we're matching pipe size to an existing.
Do you remember, is that six inch?
Sixty six.
Sixty six.
Yeah. Well, which.
Storm sewer.
Oh, storm!
Storm sewer.
Thank you, okay.
What were you thinking?
I wanted to put it sixty six inch.
Run off, never mind. Okay. No, that's more than adequate to handle that.
So, wall life is in there, or what are we dealing with here?
That'd be green.
Be green, might be a little shallow for wall, might be a little warm.
Just, it's a nice, it's a nice like, like feature, you know, even though it's a pond, but it's still, it's a nice feature to have there.
How do we keep the geese out of there?
That's a really good question.
That's been our biggest challenge in town, is trying to keep the geese.
Why, let's talk to the game and fish, I'm sure.
I was going to say, if you guys let, let the duck hunters out, the geese hunters out there in the fall. So, yes, again, as I said, it's, it's a, it's a hundred and thirty eight lots on this property, you know, this was proposed. The north half is, it's a little hard to decide, the north half, we propose as sort of a fifty five plus community. Most of those are single store, single level living with crawl spaces type of thing. And the clubhouse, the north of the pond right there, it sort of serves as an amenity space there.
Yeah, I thought that clubhouse feature looked really nice, you know, it just complements the area, and like I said, you got the pond there, too. It's just a nice setup.
It's a similar style of development to the ranch in West Fargo, if you're familiar with that area, that's sort of that same. The north half is set up that same way as that. The southern half, which is sort of the stuff to the west of the pond and south of the larger pond, that is set up as traditional single family residencials. So, it'll be just sort of whatever, you know, the builder, which is Heritage Homes, you know, works with the, finds that they buy lots and develop them for homeownership. As you can see, like I said, we've got the center islands on the cul-de-sac that provides for, you know, the one way loop, storm snore, which makes things a lot more usable and nice than your standard, you know, big bulk cul-de-sacs.
Yep.
In, in that respect.
We appreciate that, because cul-de-sacs are a nightmare for snow removal.
The public works guys, yeah, we've, we've talked to them, listened to them.
You talk to them, yeah, they'll tell you, they'll, they'll tell me, yep.
Is there any plans for multifamily at all?
No, this is all single family.
Future phases possibly?
I'm sorry?
Future phases possibly?
Well, that'd be awesome if we can get the land. That wouldn't, that'd be something that we're very seriously thinking about, but we don't have any land there. If you can convince somebody, we'd love to.
Well, I like this plat, it looks nice, very, really nice.
I, I really appreciate it, too. I was at the planning and zoning meeting, and I thought it was beautiful. I, I am very excited to have this feature in our community. Man, I, I kind of wish we had had some more of that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments?
I just had a couple, you know, we talked about sixty fifth here tonight, we're just putting in the sewer and the water. Is, is there any connectivity issues that you, that they need for sixty fifth to be a road access, or where, where does that fit on the?
No, right.
It's east of sixty six.
Yes, that, that current loop, if you zoom in, Jim, a little bit on that, that is where sixty fifth is, so we're tying right into the intersection. We don't need any, yeah, we don't need any street access, we just need the utilities.
Okay. Yeah, and I did have good discussions, too, with the developers. I also appreciate that I think there's some pretty nice buffering.
Yes.
For the properties, if you could maybe just speak to that a little bit.
You mean as far as going around the property?
Yeah, I mean, that there's going to be, there's going to be some buffering on.
Yes, we've got a beautiful quality fence going on the east side, all the way down the road, also along the north, coming back down to that L shape, if you will, and then coming all the way across down to the pond, so it's, it's pretty substantial.
Do you have a spec for that fence yet?
You know, well, actually, it's very similar to the one that we did with the, at the ranch. The only difference is, it's going to be a little bit better. The one at the ranch is great, except for the fact that there's some wood fibers in it, it can tend to fade.
Yeah.
The one that we're working on now has none, so it'll be maintenance truly free and no color discoloration.
I, I say that only because we've had some improved fences in this town.
And you're a little sensitive.
I am a little sensitive. We, we just had a fence put up along sixty six that is a reinforced, very strong fence, and it's, it's maintained sixty five mile an hour plus winds.
Yes.
And I was pretty impressed with that, and you're going to be in the wide open
Yep.
on that north end, the northwest side especially. So, please make sure that you take that into consideration, because there are very few fences that have survived north of me that were anything less.
For sure, that's great advice. And Dakota Fence is doing it for us, and they are, they backed this, they said, this is exactly what you want to do, and, you know, of course, they like, they like the price tag. I don't care for it so much, but it's the right way to do it. You're absolutely right, it's because of that.
Good. Can you scroll down to the bottom of that plat, please? Is there two ways in and out?
Yes, there is, that, that south one right there ties in, and that loops all the way around up to the north side.
Okay, I was just making sure.
And then the third is this proposed stub.
Got it, okay. And that's sixty second, does that come out by Cub Creek?
It connects into a proposed roadway with, in Willow Grove.
Oh, Willow Grove, and then that one goes up.
And then Willow Grove, that connects into Cub Creek Way slash Christianson Boulevard.
Thank you, okay. Well, this looks good, real nice, nicely done.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I don't know if any residents are here.
That's what I asked. Okay. Please, got any questions?
Yeah, in regards to the fence, it was brought up on, at the planning and zoning commission, on the east side there, on the larger pond, where is the cutoff to the south? The end of the fence that runs around the south, and is it before the pond, is it past the pond?
It's kind of where it's cursed, or just the way.
Right at the last residential lot on the north side of the large pond lot, would be where the fence currently ends, because that is, that, anything south of the pond is currently just ag field right now, so it's close south of all the resident, existing residents that are there. It doesn't show low and the strongs, we can't see that.
Is that lot twenty nine block five?
Yes.
No, there is an additional, there is, that pond backs up to the last house.
Yeah, so they're going to have a pond view, but they won't, they see.
So, it doesn't, does that lot line, it's hard to see on that. There is the last lot line right there underneath that fifty five fifty there. That is the last, end of the last residential lot.
Additional to the south, there's one more additional home to the south there.
Have to verify that and look at what that.
Jeff, bump out on the left side, that would be the second to last, and that would cover up to that fifty five, where it's, where it's, you know, written over. That'd be one, and then the one to the right of that would be the last residential property that's currently there.
Again, I'd have to pull it up, I can't see where that is in the world.
See that bump out, it would be, it'd be the northwest corner of that second to last property.
Well, to answer your question, it's going up to where the pond is. So, any residents backing on will have the buffer that you've mentioned, and then the pond will be exposed to be open.
And then, since there, you guys are doing this on your own, and like, virtually no special assessments, but clearly you guys are in like a regional districts that we discussed tonight, too, so I'm hoping that you guys, you guys are still going to tell the residents that are moving in there that there's possibilities of them having, having specials with the city, okay?
Yeah, there is, there is going to be existing, but to what, to what number, it's only in the box.
Right.
Hundred percent.
Thank you. I think it's great.
Fantastic, thank you.
All right, any other comments?
Nope, keep those paths wide. Life is good.
Lucas, I'm going to shut down the public hearing on both the rezone and the plat, and I'm going to look for a motion to accept the rezone.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie does a second, all right, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, on plats, sing.
I'll make a motion to, for the plat.
Okay.
With Steph's recommended conditions?
Yes.
Yeah, with recommended conditions, okay.
And you said that those radiuses met what fire needed? Did I hear that right?
Yeah, they just want to make sure they're maintained.
Yeah.
That they're maintained.
That those.
Steph, we're talking winter time in general?
Generally, if generally most likely, it'd be some no, some no parking signage to maintain access and stuff, type of thing, is what we're going to have to do. Which I believe is on our signing plan, I think I sent over to you, Jim. I'd have to double check.
Yeah.
But yes, it'd be signed for some no parking, obviously, to maintain the required clear width for fire trucks.
So, we can get trucks through this, awesome.
Correct.
Forgive the interruption.
No, that's my motion, though, with the.
And we made the motion. Now, can we get a second on that?
I'll second.
Stephanie does a second, all right, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, all right, Jase, you got this next one, Southdale Farms.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys, for holding up.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, this is an application for a rezone and plat. The applicant filed an application for subdivision approximately eleven point nine oh acres into one lot, and proposes to rezone that from its current district of egg to commercial.
I'm sorry. We're on Southdale Farms eight, you said?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Egg to commercial.
Correct.
Okay.
So, no new roadways or pathway systems are being provided with subdivision in the property. As Jim alluded, right of way for sixty fifth avenue and sixty fourth avenue have been proposed as part of the subdivision request. Staff would note that future access to the property should be limited to either sixty fifth or sixty sixth street south, and those of that's been included within the recommended motion of the council. The proposed property just, is proposed to be platted just at this time, no further plans for further, or future development of the parcel have been proposed. Further subdivision designer view or site plan review application may be required as the property develops in the future. On June twenty four, twenty twenty four, the Park District issued recommendation for public land dedication for Southdale Farms eighth addition. As the proposed development area is approximately eleven point nine acres, a public land dedication of point five nine acres is required. The Park District recommending that the point five nine acre requirement withdrawn from the developer's land dedication credit, which would bring their total remaining credit down to three point zero one acres. And I'll pull up the vicinity map for this one, so we can all see that, like I said, the developer's not proposing any further development with the property at this time. The developers, they are in contract or talking with a potential church as a future user for this property, who is about a five year timeline from now, but the applicant is here as well this evening, so I will withhold for any questions at this point, and a reminder, both of these are public hearings.
We'll look up for the, for the public hearing on the rezone and the plat. Chris, what do you got?
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So, what we're proposing is a ten acre development, maybe a little bit less, but for a future church, Harvest Valley Church is a church that would be purchasing the property. We're zoning it commercial. It'll be a church and possible future daycare type use. They have a teacher, one of the pastors of the church, that can speak more on their, on their timeline. And on sixty fifth avenue, their timeline is, like Jay said, four to five years out, so we don't need the pavement, but we do need the utilities to service the subdivision on the previous agenda item for Sunset Valley. So, if you have any questions, I'll be here, I might bring anything else to add, but.
Are there planned to be any outbuildings with the church? I know that we're not talking, we're just looking at a rezone here.
Yep.
Just curious, you know, help us, help us get a picture of what you're looking at.
Yeah, we don't actually have a developed site plan yet. We've done some preliminary work with just programming, planning out, how much space would we ultimately need, and what does that mean in terms of, you know, site square footage? As far as laying it out, there's not been a discussion on outbuildings, rather than simply a single structure, possibly phased, but contiguous, so.
Good. What, what brings you to Horus?
I mean, the, the short, end of the, the short version of the story is, we just, our team before we started the church felt like this is part. felt like this is part of Metro, God wanted us to be in. And so, it's always been specific, we want to be in Horace. And in just the search for where to find that land, uh, to build a future facility on. Ended up discussing with Kevin, and this is what opened up, and so, yeah.
You guys are currently in the school, right?
Yeah, we've been renting Heritage Middle School, uh, whenever it's available.
I have some dear friends that are members of your church that will be thrilled with this.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay.
Chris, could you, you said something about the infrastructure that's needed, or something in connection to Sunset Valley? I'm sorry, could you just repeat that?
Yeah, so, um, what Jim mentioned, uh, I think it was on item, item was that?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, um, that infrastructure will be installed, um, but we, we won't sign the petition, or, we won't request for the petition for improvements for the street until, um, Peter, um, and his organization are ready to move forward.
Okay, okay.
Southdale Farms fourth, we have our exit points that we need, um, to Christiansen, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions?
No, I have nothing further. Welcome to Horace.
Think we're good, gentlemen, thank you. I'm gonna close the public hearing on both the rezone and the plat. I'll look for a motion to accept the, uh, rezone.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Just a second, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Same on the plat, looking for a motion to accept the plat.
Sure.
Make that motion, okay, good.
Who makes a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Just a second, all right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Southdale Farms ninth, Jace, you got this one?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we'll go just a little bit further south. Uh, the area outline in green is the, the general, uh, boundary of this project. Uh, the applicants filed an application for a subdivision and rezone of approximately fifty, fifteen point five acres into sixty-six lots. Um, and with that, a rezone from its current district classification of ag to R six and, uh, public facilities. I would note again, this is an application that was submitted prior, uh, to the adoption of the new land use ordinance. Um, but there are some, majority of the development is actually designed to the, the new standards. So, the proposed development features, a lot size is averaging approximately seventy-four hundred square feet. Um, again, staff would note that it was adopted, or submitted prior to the adoption. However, vast majority of the development is compliant with the proposed standards of com, of the compact residential zoning district, uh, which is defined within the new ordinance. The only portion that, I'm gonna pull up the, the map here. The only portion that is, uh, not compliant with the new standards are lots one through three, block one of this. Viewports here. So these three lots are below that forty-five foot width minimum, um, which actually end up throwing off the development average by like point one. It's like forty-seven point nine in terms of the, the average lot width at the end of going through. Um, the six lots on this side here were previously provided lot services with the construction of, of a prior phase of Southdale Farms, uh, which is the reason why they submitted beforehand, um, in order just to avoid any of the, the concern of those three lots. Uh, but it is our understanding in talking with, with the applicant, um, that the, the developer of the project intends on complying with the setback standards of the new ordinance, uh, which include the seven-foot side yard and the twelve-foot street side yard setbacks. Um, again, on March eleventh, twenty twenty-four, the Horace Park District issued a recommendation for land dedication. Uh, the overall development requires one point five five acres of dedication, uh, with the previous additions of Southdale Farms, the developer over-dedicated through public land dedication requirements, uh, which created a public land dedication credit with the park district, which has generally been accepted by the city. The park district noted that with the requirements of one point five five acres, uh, the developer has approximately one point five acres remaining of land dedication credit. Uh, in the original layout of the development, a, a couple versions ago, the applicant proposed very deep lots along sixty-sixth Street South. Um, the applicants approached, approached the park district about providing additional, uh, land dedication to help shorten up those lots and provide a buffer along sixty-sixth Street, which brings us to, uh, this park lot right here. Um, the park district was, uh, willing to accept the land dedication with the stipulation that this action is independent of prior and potential future land dedications based on the city ordinance for public land dedication. Um, and, and staff does have a note in the report that staff could support the park district's recommendation and have included a condition of approval that the dedication of lot one, block three, uh, shall be independent of the prior and potential future land use dedications based on the city ordinance within the Southdale Farms development. With the previous, uh, construction occurring in the area, an easement for sanitary sewer was acquired and the line was installed through, uh, a portion of the development. Uh, following other development patterns in the area, the alignment of Christianson Boulevard was shifted slightly to allow more room for additional accesses onto sixty-sixth Street and provide access to a development to the southeast of the proposed development. Uh, this however, did push the alignment of Christianson Boulevard off the existing easement and resulted in the installation of lot ten, block two through here. Uh, we brought up the question of the planning zoning commission, but I'll pose it, uh, to the council as well, uh, whether or not that lot should remain a lot and, and dedicate to the city or be reverted to an expanded right-of-way. Uh, staff says the opinion that for the sake of maintaining a clean corridor in terms of right-of-way width, our preference would be keep it as lot ten, block two. Um, and then again, add a condition that that lot be dedicated to the city via the plat. So the planning and zoning commission held a public hearing on April ninth, uh, to receive public testimony, review the application. Following the commission's discussion, the commission voted five-o to recommend approval of the plat and rezone for Southdale Farms ninth, uh, subject to the conditions noted in the staff report, uh, which are dedication of lot one, block three, uh, to the park district shall be independent of prior and potential future land dedication requirements by the city, or by city ordinance. Uh, lot ten, block two shall be dedicated to the city of Horace. Lot one, block three, and lot ten, block two shall both be zoned public facilities. And development agreements with both the city and Casper Water shall be signed prior to the plat being recorded. And with that, I will stand for any questions, and the applicant is the same as the last one, so.
Yeah. Would you kindly show me the other two lots that are public dedication?
So the, the two that are public dedication are lot ten?
And one, yep.
And one.
What are the other two?
Those are the, the two.
I thought there was two other ones that were for park facilities.
No, they took a, so with Southdale Farms, I believe, first edition, or there was an over credit of land dedication, so they have the credit with that. So the park district is just pulling from their existing credit for the recommendations. So there's no further land dedication apart from.
Read the last paragraph.
Yeah, you said public facilities, which.
Correct, for the zoning district of those properties.
So it's, it's those two properties, it's not two additional?
Correct. Yeah, I'm just, it had, separated out that lot one, block three, and lot ten, block two, which are both of those be zoned public facilities, because their original application did not have those zoning districts on them.
Okay, I must have heard wrong then, because I, I swore I heard two other.
Sorry, there was a lot of lots and blocks that I listed out there, so I apologize. But no, the, the intent of that motion, or that, um, that condition is just to make sure that when we approve the, the rezoning, that those are, are zoned public facilities, that they'll both be owned by public entities.
Is there any, um, shared use paths or anything through this area?
Not apart from.
Just the sidewalks on sixty-sixth?
Christianson will have them.
Christianson will have them, and there are shared use paths along sixty-six as well.
Okay.
So sidewalks through Benji Lane and all those, yeah.
So let me open up the public hearing, and start with that for both the rezone and the plat. Can you get that recorded there, Lucas?
That's right.
Any other questions on this one? Chris, anything you want to add to that, or kind of went over it?
No, just, if you have additional questions, this one did get a little bit confusing with the original road alignment, didn't line up with the other, um, subdivisions that were being, um, platted, uh, to the east. So we ended up with some different, kind of weird triangle-shaped lots. And that's, when, when we did our first application, we didn't, we just had really deep lots. But then after looking at it, um, like on lot ten, that's actually, we realized that there was a sanitary sewer installed. So, um, that's part of an easement, and nobody's gonna want that easement through their backyard. And they're likely have a fence. Um, that would not be, um, good if, if something had to be done to that sanitary sewer for maintenance, and then their fence would be destroyed. So that's why we got lot ten, and then, uh, the park lot, lot one. We had close to three hundred foot deep, um, plots, and it, it, uh, and that happened when we adjusted some of the road alignment. So it just made sense to talk to park district, would you like some additional green space? And it wouldn't, uh, it wouldn't change anything on the other agreements that we made, so. Basically, a, a, additional donation.
Right, okay.
And then, and then it goes with, uh, it, it actually lays out quite nice with the bike path that will be on the west side of, uh, of sixty-six, and then the, the one coming along Christianson, so.
Okay.
Okay, cool.
And we have no ponds, no additional infrastructure outside of what would normally come with this development?
Yep, so when we did Southdale third, um, that is a, a little bit larger pond, and that will handle all the storm sewer from this subdivision and the storm sewer from Southdale fourth.
Okay.
So, and then there, there, when we did Southdale Farm first edition, there's the two ponds, um, on each side of the area.
And so right now, everything comes out onto sixty-sixth, uh, with the exception of the pathway that goes through to Christianson over to seventeen, and then Benji comes all the way down into that square L, correct?
Correct, yep, and goes, and then just, uh, egg, or, and then goes onto sixty-six, just, uh, north of your place.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Chris? Is there any landscape plan or anything for this?
No, I mean, it would just be whatever the, the park lot, and then the landscape, the street landscaping will be along Christianson and.
Yeah, Christianson will be along.
And, and sixty-sixth.
Okay. Have we talked about that at all?
No, the next item is petition for the improvement, so that kickstarts that.
Okay, appreciate that.
Sixty-sixth gets improvements, or landscaping as part of the sixty-sixth street projects.
Right.
There might not be a lot that goes along there.
Okay.
But Christianson will have some.
I'm just curious, because I know we didn't plan, um, for a park there previously. So I would like to make sure that we're looking at plantings, and if there's, you know, I don't know what they're gonna do there, but just for future.
Yeah, and, and I know, once we did this, um, and I did, he probably doesn't have it, but I did show Jace, whatever the park ends up doing with that lot, if they do wanna to add a small, um, parking lot, there is room. Oh yeah, there it is. So, I don't know what they plan on doing, um.
It's, it's kind of handy if there is a little parking lot there.
That was something that was brought up, uh, during, um, the planning and zoning.
You'd be amazed how many high school kids come up and play basketball over the lunch hour at our little park.
I guess that, that does raise one question for me, I guess, the, the street, the main street, is that wide enough for parking, or, or what were we? Um, what was the plan for that? I mean, has, has fire approved the width of the road?
Yep, yep, it's following the, uh, the city of Horace's, uh, right-of-way, uh, width dedication.
So the street width hasn't been set forth yet? Or they're talking about it's the right-of-way dedication for the seventy feet?
Uh, yeah, I guess I was probably jumping ahead a little bit, but I guess I was just asking, are we gonna have parking? You know, I just thought when you bring up parking by the park, sometimes we have, we don't have a lot of parking. I didn't know if we were gonna do parking on the.
There will be no parking on sixty-sixth or Christianson.
I mean that other.
Or Benji Lane.
Oh, Benji, I don't think that's wide enough for parking.
So thirty, thirty feet is the new land use ordinance, street width.
Yeah.
The issue we've had with R six, or whatever it's being called now, is that there is no parking because the driveways eat up, like, all of the space along the roads.
Yeah, you can't park between the driveways.
Unless you offset, unless you offset your driveways, so it's like, one is left and one is right. You don't have much space there.
It's possible?
He just said the driveway's gonna eat. So with a forty-five foot lot, twenty-four of that is eaten up with the driveway. Plus the flares on the end.
Will it sustain a boulevard tree?
So they got it for, like, boulevard tree?
We got a, a number of boulevard trees in there, in their forty-foot lots as they are. It's just when we get into, get some of the small islands, that's where we get into the problems, and then distance from streetlights and things like that. But for, I think we only pulled one stake out of Southdale Farms this year, when driving through there.
I mean, do we have any concerns about the fact that there won't be a lot of parking ability within the development?
I guess we don't know what the, the driveway apron is. Majority of these are forty-six, forty-five, like, I mean, not a huge excess, but still excess of what the forty-five foot width minimum is. You know, this would be probably our first test case to see at the bare minimum, what do those now aprons end up looking like with the home product that they have?
I'm just really talking more just generally about the fact that sometimes we struggle with, with having parking.
That's been a discussion since R six was created.
Yeah, and I know, you know, the fire department does, they, they wanna make sure that we're, they're able to get their fire trucks through. So if we have this issue like we do with old Horace.
And I apologize, I might, I might be jumping ahead here, but has fire, we haven't gotten that far yet, have we? I mean, ever has fire reviewed?
We review everything, we have meetings with.
You've already reviewed it, okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page. And you know what, it was probably in the staff report, I apologize.
Yeah, and, and these lots, um, are very similar to like what we did in Southdale Farms first, where they didn't have continuous, like, forty-three foot lots. We had some forty-fives and some forty-eights, um, and, uh, this isn't, it is R six, but we're actually not, we're actually following the new compact residential ordinance.
Okay.
Except for, um, like Jace pointed out, the six lots, um, in the northwest corner. Part of that was, um, all the services, and we had, they, they put utilities and everything. It was something that was brought up after we did the subdivision, um, and it was brought up by, uh, the city, and Jim stating it would make sense to get the services, so we didn't have to go back in to, um, sixty-seven, um, after we just completed it. So that's why, when we did that original plat, we, hindsight, we should have included that little piece, but didn't think of it until during the construction phase.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, then I'm gonna close the public hearing on the rezone plat. Look for a motion to accept the rezone.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Steph makes a motion, can I get a second?
Sure.
Does a second, all right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Same on the plat, looking for a motion to accept the plat.
I'll make that motion.
Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Does a second, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Jim, this is a continuation here.
Yeah, probably shouldn't have included it with that one, but anyways. Um, so New Horizon Homes has submitted a petition for public improvements on these, this area. Um, all we have for you tonight is just an acceptance, acceptance of the petition. We are working on the district boundary, um, just to try to make it be the most beneficial for all the properties. This does have a regional component with Christianson Boulevard in it. So we're working to make sure that we bring the appropriate district forward, um, with this, uh, project. So you just have the acceptance of the petition before you tonight.
Okay. Any questions on that?
No.
I'm gonna look for a motion to accept the petition for improvements.
Motion to accept petition for improvements.
Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
A second, okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. We have a nineteen point five, which is CHS purchase agreement.
We just took that out.
We just took that out, I'm not sure, okay, what would we wanna do?
Yeah, so
Lucas, you can explain that a little bit.
Since he, he worked with the agreement.
I can do my best to work through this one. So as you guys know, you directed me to attend the auction for the, the lot on the south side of town. We have not to exceed a amount, the city ended up purchasing the lot for four hundred and two thousand dollars. Part of that, the terms of that sale required the city to put down earnest money, so city put down the ten percent earnest money for that lot. Since that time, my office has been in coordination with CHS's legal team in the cities. They, the local office directed us to, to work with them on the closing. The closing date is scheduled for May twenty-third, so that's obviously coming up. Our office requested the abstract for the property so we can conduct a title opinion to make sure that there are no issues with the property, verify where any easements may or may not be located on the property. Part of the purchase agreement describes doing an environmental type review of the property, which is limited to essentially a site visit. No like boring or anything. They didn't agree to allow anything further than that, which is not of surprise to us.
I'm sorry, is that like a soil testing type thing or?
Yeah, just do a more detailed environmental review.
Why wouldn't they want that?
Just cause they don't
Are we concerned about that?
Corporate hasn't, no, I mean, the city knows what was used on the property, they, they had tanks and stuff there. So your, your site assessment is going to reveal that anyway, it's
Until we would take on the risk if there were environmental contaminants.
Correct, yeah. So, so, I mean, I feel like the city's aware of what that property was used for. The, the closing for this, they are doing via quick claim deed. And any other questions that you might have with it? It's all pretty straightforward and it seemed pretty decent to work with on this one, so.
Do you guys have any questions?
No.
Questions on that?
No.
I think the purchase agreement was included in the packet.
Okay.
I just have a follow-up question, I don't know if you wanna proceed with the motion on the purchase agreement?
I'll ask any, any questions or comments you guys have.
My only follow-up question was, I can't remember if there was discussion about what the funding sources were for the land purchase.
I did double check what we had identified, I believe it was public facilities.
Okay.
I believe that's what we had, but I haven't double checked.
Public facilities, and then, I mean, there's a, at least right now, a pretty hefty estimated special assessment on the process, on that property.
Where's that?
I think like a half a million dollars, is that, will that be coming out of public facilities too?
Was that the district that was?
Yeah.
Okay, that was dissolved, right?
No.
Yeah, but they're
So that, that's not, that's not there anymore then, right?
Well, they're in it again.
Yeah.
Okay, but that project has completely changed. If you're trying to associate that with that, that's no longer there.
Well, do you, but do you agree that, I mean, okay, the special assessment amounts that are gonna be on the policy, on the piece of the property, where will those funds come from? There's gonna be special assessments on the pot, on the property. So is that also coming out of public facilities?
Sorry, special assessment debt increments come out of sales tax.
Okay. I guess I, I mean, is, is that a have-to? Or is there, are there other opportunities for that? I guess I'd like to see that money come out of public facilities. I'd like to reserve our sales tax for our infrastructure funds.
Discuss that later.
Okay, thank you.
Next year, I'll have that with me.
Thank you.
Alright, any other questions on that one? Was gonna look for a motion to accept the purchase agreement.
I'll make the motion.
Makes a motion, can I get a second?
The only one that you need to turn?
No, I'm, I'm a no because I didn't vote for the property, so.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, Sarah does a second, so we'll do a roll call on this one, we hear some dissension. Alright, so Sarah?
Aye.
Naomi?
No.
Stephanie?
No.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I go yes as well, so, okay, move on to the next one. Breton, you got, wanna talk about that a little bit?
Hey, this item here is in regards to draft up a letter, trying to keep it very simple. Basically, it's a request to City of Fargo for the next, or the second connection or the next connection for sanitary sewer services. We were talking a little bit about that earlier today. Jim, Mayor Pierce and I met with City of Fargo in mid-April to talk about what Fargo would need in Fargo in order to be able to, be able to start playing this through or start continuing to have deeper discussions with them. They said they would like to have a request from the City of Horace via a letter to be able to present to their city commission. So their city commission could then delegate or have their staff start working towards this. Overall, what we'd be asking for is to be working towards this project, be able to be in position to have construction begin in twenty twenty-five with completion either later that year or early in twenty twenty-six. Once that commission, or once that project would be completed, we'd be able to start the process of decommissioning our lagoons. We recognize that would take quite a bit of time. Currently, our lagoon is draining to drain twenty-seven, so that is a benefit to Fargo, we don't have our lagoon string in there. They have future, I believe, recreation area and all that north of us.
Flooding pool.
So
That's what they claim.
Yeah, so there's some benefit there to them too. Fargo is in the process of bringing down sanitary sewer down to sixty-fourth street or sixty-fourth avenue on forty-fourth, forty-fifth street. That's closer than what we were originally anticipating when we were first coming up or first discussing this project with them. So that is a positive thing, helps with the costs there of the project. The overall path of the project, once it gets outside Horace, will be seventy-sixth avenue going east to forty-fifth street and then going north on forty-fifth street to Fargo's line or where they anticipate to be completed. I believe it's next year to have that in, correct?
Uh, depends on development, so right now they have sewers sixty-fourth avenue. They would be looking, continuing that south if there's development in this place. So every bit that they come south is less, you have to go north.
Yep. We do not have identified exactly if we're on the north or south side of the road for seventy-six or
No.
On, or on forty-fifth, that would be something we would work in collaboration with Fargo on to determine the side of the road or beyond. But this is in order to get the ball moving, get them to be able to be more serious on moving forward with this connection. That's what provide us with, to be able to address all their capacity needs in the future. This would be two sewer lines, I believe. Is it, is two, is it one pipe or two pipes? It was two at one point, so.
We've looked at four ways and we're just getting started.
So it would be for that line.
But that's for you and Fargo, that's for you guys and Fargo's engineers, like we talked about. You guys will sit down and figure out the specifics on that, we just know
Yep.
Need to do it, we know the approximate route, we just don't know how far south Fargo's gonna come with the pipes yet. So that's the only wild card, but otherwise.
And then I believe you would have a meter pit slash list station.
Yeah, it'd be very similar to what it is up, but
Like we have Deer Creek.
Deer Creek, yeah.
Yeah. Your role.
So.
So it's basically to come up with the letter, this, I don't know, letter of intent or whatever that would be.
It's a, it's a request or intent to connect. With that then, they would, we would be revising our sewer agreement to update that component. They've indicated that they're, they would need to be doing an update to that sewer agreement at some point right here in the next few years anyways.
Cause we did the same thing when we petitioned to hook up to Deer Creek, we went to the same verbiage and lettering, so.
Yep.
What's the action?
Basically approval to be able to
Send the letter?
Send this letter, we want to be able to
Oh, okay.
I, I wanna make sure this is okay with the city council, you guys are okay with us moving forward with sending this letter to start that process, so.
This is the flush to Fargo project, the start of it.
Were we still working with the state to get?
We're still trying different avenues.
We, we still keep pushing the state on trying to encourage them to create some funding avenues, like grant programs for sewer projects, sanitary sewer projects.
They had done that the last time around, they got kiboshed at the very end of the session. It was unfortunate, cause there was what, four or five of us that were in the same boat and all that. So. Try some different avenues here next time. Anyway.
Other questions?
Are you concerned?
About what?
Well, the funding.
No.
Okay.
Well, do, I suppose we don't even have estimate the cost.
We had six thousand dollars, but we don't know the specifics of it all yet. That's what you directed me to do earlier in the agenda.
I mean, and I guess obviously we need to decide funding as we get to that point.
And I can tell you, a very high level for funding, you know, like I was mentioning earlier tonight. We do, we're trying to avoid going like a special assessment route if we have to. That's what we're trying to avoid, what we're working towards is we still have our diversion settlement dollars that we use some for the water projects. The intent would be put the remaining money towards that, that would knock down the cost. If Fargo does expand going, continue going south with their needs already, then that cuts down on our cost. I twenty-nine commerce is looking at connecting, I don't know if they're laying up a forty-fifth street, but if that would, and that's something that would be hashed through with Fargo at, in these next rounds of discussions. But that could help with the costs there too, because I twenty-nine needs a connection from Fargo.
But by the time this gets special, we should be in a whole different ballgame with that
And Prairie Dog would be a different ballgame at that point, that is correct.
Absolutely.
And then the other one is, there's this SRF loan program, that's a low-interest loan. That's a two percent loan right now, all structured. If we were able to do that, we could potentially borrow that against the utility and then have the utility rates to help pay back that loan. So we're trying to use those different mechanisms to avoid an assessment district, that's our overall goal. And that's why, like I was saying earlier tonight, for the other project, that could be, it would be treated like, what we recommend to council would be, for the other project would be the cost here, like we do with regional projects, cause we're trying to tackle this big one without even going specials. That's our overall goal.
Okay, any other questions?
I don't think so.
Alright, I'm gonna look for a motion to accept the petition to Fargo to start the process for the sewer line.
Make that motion.
Let's see, here we got it.
Sure.
Jeff, you wanna do a second?
Second.
Fair enough, alright, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries, alright, Breton, you may as well send Mayor Mahoney the letter he's been looking for.
Remove the draft and get that moving here.
Perfect. Alright.
The next item here
I mean, they're expecting the letter, right?
They requested it.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Okay, the next one here is in regards to G I S part, just so we show where we're talking. Staff's proposing site improvements to the empty lot or vacant lot at six fifty Nelson. That's the empty lot the city owns, just on the south side of our big shop building. What we're looking at, you're asking to do is to gravel the site. Basically, it'd be remove the top soil, put a fabric mat down and then gravel it and then put a security fence around a portion of this. What this would do is help us create additional storage, parking spaces for vehicles and equipment. And right now, we're getting pretty tight. It's very difficult for parking for residents to come in or act with the city at city hall or even staff. So we're looking for additional parking for that, for city equipment, like trailers and different things like that that can be outside. But we wanna have them in a secure area. The remaining portion or area, if we can make this work, this is what we're trying to do, is on the southwest corner of that, along Nelson, would be hopefully to be able to have an area where we could put some dumpster, you know, a couple dumpsters for the cardboard recycling. We talked about that about a year ago, trying to get to a point of that, we have really, we haven't really had a great location for that that can be monitored easy. Over here, it could be, we have some security cameras over at the shop and we could actually have cameras monitoring that area too and also keep track of it a little easier. So those are the different improvements we wanna do. That, the soil around there is really soft, so if you go in there anytime after it rains with any equipment, you're gonna be sinking down pretty good, it's pretty muddy, and that's why we need to have the top soil removed from there. What the proposals, we had two different proposals for the excavation work and gravel work. One from Glacier, or, from Glacier Enterprises and then Enterprises and then Western Excavations. Option one from both of those is to remove the top soil, lay fabric down. And option one is to just pile the gravel and then we'd have to spread it ourselves. Option two is, the difference is they will spread the gravel, pack it down and basically the site will be ready to go for the gravel side of it.
How will they pack it, a vibratory roller or did they specify?
I'll check here.
Driving over it with tracks isn't good enough.
Yeah.
I mean, are they reselling the top soil or are we at least getting some sort of?
Problem with that is the only word to put it.
They just indicate
Agreed, the top soil is tough. I mean, we, we've, part of the excavation for sixty-fifth street is gonna be used, sixty-second avenue is gonna be used on sixty-fourth to try to
We were short top soil north of me, if I recall. I'm just making sure they're not double dipping, you know, cutting.
They probably are.
Billing us to remove it and then charging somebody else to put it down somewhere else.
You can pay four times for top soil.
I know.
You can pay to remove it, haul it, stockpile it, sell it again.
Yeah. And
I thought we paid KPH to bring additional black dirt in because we were short on sixty-sixth floor.
We had to subcut, that's where we brought in the extra cost, was for that first little soil correction. I don't remember there being a top soil, but I, I can, I might have mistaken, it's been a year.
So either way, I could ask, you know, we could ask if, if you do wanna have a spot, if we can identify a spot to hold the top soil, but like Jim said, it's a matter of where can you put it?
Yeah.
Space is tight, getting tight for that. But if you like us to keep the top soil, we can see if the price changes there. However, like I said, the main difference in option one, option two, from my understanding, is the packing. Do I have the answer of what type of packing, no I do not, it just says packing in the quotes there. As for both of those quotes, or the quotes from Glacier and quotes from Western, staff is recommending option two, which is to spread it, pack it, do everything for thirty-six thousand nine hundred and forty. The comparable quote with, from Western was for fifty-seven thousand, fifty-five dollars and seventy-three cents. The other portion of this is the fencing, we were able to get a quote from Dakota Fence for twenty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five, four dollars. That's for a six-foot tall galvanized chain link fence.
Barbed wire?
I don't believe we had barbed wire included within that.
Electric?
You honestly, we could add some barbed wire in there. What I was asking for is, overall budget is sixty-five thousand, total cost estimate between the fence and Glacier's, Glacier Enterprises, option two, was sixty thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. I'm asking if we have approval up to sixty-five thousand dollars in order to be able to make this happen.
Yeah.
That would give us a little bit of cushion in case there were some adjustments like what you're talking about.
It all depends on what you're parking out there.
Yeah.
If you want the stuff taken for an insurance claim, then by all means, no barbed wire, right?
Yeah.
Is there any cost to the cardboard recycling portion?
We would have, for the dumpsters, they, they did put the dumpsters there and then they would haul them out. So we do have some costs that would hit our solid waste fund.
Is it weight, waste management?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And where we are, we don't have the specific costs on that one. It really depends on how much is utilized, if it's used a lot and we have them hauling off the dumpsters for
I've had a lot of residents request recycling.
It is a very popular request.
Do they not use the recycling bin for the residential that they get?
We don't have, well, for cars
I mean, like, I have my recycling at the house.
Yeah. Cardboard, a lot of folks, the, their own personal bin or the bins that they have at their house are not adequate enough or big enough. If you look at the different cardboard recycling sites across the metro, you're like West Fargo and Fargo, they're full, a lot of times they're getting full fairly quickly. So as for our costs, I wish I could tell you a specific cost, but it really depends on how much is utilized and how much we have waste management coming and taking those dumpsters.
There's a lot of Amazon packages coming out to Horace, so.
I, I can say like, given for my house, we have cardboard boxes that you build up and then it's okay, what are we gonna do with these, so. So sometimes I chop them up.
Just make sure we have some signage that's very, very clear about breaking down the boxes. And that people can see the cameras, because otherwise you get people bringing boxes in and not breaking them down. And you fill that thing up in half a day.
And that's why we figure also by having it right next to the public works facility, it's more apt to people, to be honest with it. Are we going to have folks that put stuff in there that they shouldn't at times? Yes, we will. But the hopes were if having it right by public works, they would be able to keep a better eye on it, so.
All right, so what do you need from us?
Basically, if you're comfortable with the bids there, quotes, uh, overall budget, sixty-five thousand dollars. And just correcting a typo in that memo there, it says project facilities is public facilities. And so what we're proposing, in order to tap into that quite a bit on different things, we have a lot of different city projects for the benefit of the city as a whole and associated improvement there.
Do you want us to cap it?
If you'd rather hit like a sales tax fund or something like that. I, I think this fits under public facilities the most appropriately, or your, or general fund.
You want to just put a cap at sixty-five grand?
That's what I would ask, yes.
They want to make that motion? I'll make that motion. Jeff makes a motion. Let me give a second on that.
I'll second.
Seth, he goes a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, what's going on? Matt, what do you got for us?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. In November twenty twenty-two, population study for the city of Forest was completed and presented to this council by A two S. With the recent and current growth the city is experiencing, that data may now be outdated. Having been advised, the result of that study may no longer be accepted in our pocket. Uh, so Collier Security is engaging conversations with A two S to determine feasibility of updating the population study that grant current and provide us with a more accurate forecast. They responded with proposal, which has been included in your council packet. The scope of services they're proposing involve five specific tasks, one of them being optional. The first four are to review the original study and identify areas for update. Recert additional population benchmarks, update building permit information and population estimates, and document the results. Uh, the optional task would be a growth area case study in a designated section of the city over the last five years. This would accomplish two things, a demonstration of infrastructure needed to build out the city and how the growth is utilized to pay for costs. Uh, they provided a targeted date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, for completion of tasks one through four, and August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, for completion of tasks five. The cost for population study update is approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars for tasks one through four and approximately eleven thousand dollars for that growth study. Uh, total would be approximately thirty-eight million dollars. There's no concrete number we can pin to what this would save the city in terms of the interest rate on a bond. However, using an example of a fifty-million-dollar temp bond at six percent interest, uh, I'm sorry, a current bond. If this update provides even a one basis point reduction to zero point zero one percent on the final rate, it would have a revenue saving of ninety-two thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars in the city over the twenty-five-year period. Which is two and a half times the total. Any further rate reductions would compound saving even that much more, especially on multiple bonds. Uh, so what we are asking for is the authorization to need A two S to update the population study. And the cost would be rolled into the next uh, bond as it would directly affect that bond.
So, yeah, I remember we had that conversation with them. Lucas, when are we gonna have our next conversation with Moody's? That'll be later this fall?
Probably sooner than that.
Probably sooner than that, we'll be dealing with our temp bond package here. I wouldn't be surprised to see a Moody's call within the next probably month, month and a half.
Okay, I was gonna say, could we get that first part done before that call?
We'd basically be bracing this for the next permanent bond.
Okay, that's what I just was wondering.
We, we kind of recognize that we would not be, well, we recognize that we wouldn't be able to have this utilized for temp bonding, but yeah.
We'll probably be okay on the temp bonding, but it would be the permanent one that we got it.
In the fall.
Yeah.
And A two S has demonstrated that they're ready to, yeah, my gentleman, you'll be okay to go tomorrow, we're gonna start tomorrow.
Yeah, and you said August thirtieth is for that last part.
For the study, which I think is pretty important.
Well, but it is outdated. It's outdated. I mean, even the school districts talked about that, that there's, projections are outdated as well.
The, the school district does do their updates, I believe, every other year.
More frequently, I know, they're every other year.
They're doing them all every other year, and the state is now updating their population estimates annually, is my understanding. And that is what they're using for state aid and Prairie Dog funds.
That's what I mean, this would, this would either.
Yeah, this is a deeper dive.
Right, this is a deeper dive, but it would probably verify what we've been talking about. And that's what we hope the state will pay attention to that too, because that affects the Prairie Dog funds and all of our funding. So I am all in favor of getting this done, to get updates.
And so does that, is that deeper dive what is required? I mean, I apologize if I don't quite know what, what they look, what they're looking for. Are they just saying, we want to see that you're growing more, because then that might make our bond rate better?
Yeah, so what it's doing is taking what was forecast back in, you know, using the data from summer twenty twenty-two, figuring out where we've come from since then, and reforecasting it out, uh, to make sure that we're on that same path.
And that would, that would maybe make our bond rating?
Yeah, um, well, it wouldn't help the bond rating, that would help the interest rate and stuff.
We might get a lower interest rate by doing it.
Right.
I mean, is there, is there any way to just, since we just did that twenty-two months ago, I mean, could we just certify to them the building permits that we've issued since that time? Or utilize what, um, the state is, you said the state evaluates population too?
The state looks at just a general estimate.
I guess I'm just looking, I mean, if we need to do it, I understand it, but I want to do it in the least expensive way possible.
But it still saves us money in the long run when we do this kind of stuff.
I mean, my, my forecast had one basis point for savings of ninety-three thousand dollars. My best guess is this would be ten to twenty basis point savings. So you're looking at probably multi-million dollars over twenty-five years.
If we can prove that we've grown.
Thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Well.
If we've, if we can prove that we've grown since the last assessment.
It's not even grooming it, it's just updating it for updated numbers.
What it's doing is diving deeper into the population site. So it's, one is updating, but it's two is diving deeper into like the population study and going, hey, this is what is, some of the things that are driving this growth or doing this and that. It's to be able to help better explain the story of Forest, what's going on to those investors, those buyers of the bond packages. So that way, they can better relate to, oh, yeah, they are growing. Oh, let's look at this. Here's why they're projecting this and that. Uh, that, that's what it's intended to do, is dive deeper into it and update the numbers. So it's a twofold.
But that's partly why, when they go out and sell these bonds, they are marketing us, you know, because of our growth and everything like that. That's why we're so far been able to get the lower interest rates. We want to keep being able to do that and not change that. So we want to make sure that we have the latest information when we present.
Our, our bond is a story.
Some of the information from the twenty twenty-two study is from, you know, sort of like the beginning of Horace's vote. And now we're two years later, and we can really show that out.
Yeah, I mean, what they came out in twenty twenty-two, basically, like covered up to twenty-one. You know, didn't, because they were just taking that information. So we're looking at probably three years, you know, that we need to update. No, I think this is something we need to do, guys, we want to keep our, we want to be able to keep our bonds at a lower interest rate. We're in, we're in this stuff, so. Any questions? Kind of look for motion to accept, uh, doing the population study. Uh, I'd say we do all five of them, because we're gonna want to have that deep dive. So we can start doing that forecasting to help with the bonds going forward. That's thirty-eight K, right, for the whole thing?
The question thirty-eight K, um, knowing them, they probably padded a little bit, so it shouldn't come out a little harder.
You want to just say max thirty-eight?
Max thirty-eight will come back if it's.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll work.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Jim?
All right, first things first, we did have a discussion on sixty-sixth about lack of topsoil. Do you remember that? And I was reminded of it, so I do remember that, and we did have that discussion, so that.
So we have a place for topsoil?
Well, we might. That's what I was gonna say, we might have a place to put it, so.
All of it?
Yeah, probably.
Probably.
Problem is, I don't know if it's good enough to be like bedding on the top. Because it's probably been, I'm assuming they probably dumped the sweeper there about twelve times, so.
Just do it, don't tell them.
That's probably what it is, so.
Getting syrup?
When nothing grows, that'll be the thing. So, uh, anyways, construction was gearing up, start, then it rained, then it dried, and then it rained a little more. So, uh, things have been a little bit slow to get out of the chute. Um, river's at second, they're working on some storms. All the pipe work and the big back roads are gonna be out of there this week, minus the easement that we're still working on with some, some landowners along there. Um, Cup Creek second, uh, there's Storm Art Station, they're still working on Cup Creek second edition. They did a little bit of paving last Friday. I think it was a little bit wet. I was out at the office today, so I don't know what they, what they got accomplished today. Wall Avenue West, a, um, subcutted Wall Avenue West, um, the detour was set up two weeks ago. Uh, subcut it, getting ready for pipe work, pumping a lot of water over there. Um, I do have some people in that area that are keeping track of the traffic that live along the Meadowlark Park area. And then when things pick up, we'll monitor it at that point, but just waiting for it to kind of pick up. Conrad Seventeen overlay was supposed to start today. I don't know if they got that going with the, with the rain or not. So apparently they didn't, by the shaking of your heads, they didn't quite get there. Unless they started on the south end, but I don't think they did that.
Nope.
So the north says no, the south says no, we'll go if they didn't start today. So, um, aside from that, we're gonna get a couple, get a couple of projects in the queue for bidding now with the approval of U-Bet and sixty-four, so that'll be good. And then, um, we just keep plugging along with planning. We got a lot of planning when it comes to the twenty-some subdivisions that are in the queue, in one way, shape, or form. So we've been trying to lay out a lot of preemptive stuff to try to get ahead of, ahead of these subdivisions. That's what I have.
Okay, questions for Jim?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. All right, Brenton, you're next.
Okay, I'll try to run through mine really quick here. First off, we were talking about bonding here just a little bit ago. Our reinvestment bond, twenty twenty-four A, uh, which is basically taking a temporary bond, permanent financing it. Uh, we did that here just recently. The bond sale came in at, I believe, five point two seven percent, so not bad.
I was gonna say the six point five on that one, so gave it one and a quarter.
Park District had temp bond going on at the same time, and they came in on their temp bond at five point two five, I believe. So, uh, as you compare scientifically, your permanent bond is, uh, lower interest than your temp bond. And for us, you know, temp bot, Park District went unrated and for, I believe it was Freed Park. So we did not know they were timing that at the same time, but it looks like we had pretty good turnout for our bond sale, so. Other news I have is we're working on, uh, improving the audio in the back. So that way, there can be a speaker in the back of the room here tied to the microphones, and it'd be all part of that system. So we're working with Tricor on that. I don't have a timeline or anything on that right now, for that one. And then, let's see, boulevard trees were delivered today. We're excited to have that tree plant, will start next week. Uh, right, locates are getting called in tomorrow, is my understanding. Uh, we've had a lot of people calling City Hall and getting their payments taken care of, because we won't plant a tree until they've paid for the tree. So, uh, working towards that. If you have anybody that could use a boulevard tree, encourage them to call City Hall, because we do have some extras on hand. Uh, we're going through, trying to get ahold of folks that are, have new builds from last year to see if there are lots of being final graded, so then we can get the tree in. We prefer not to have the tree put in until they do have final grade. That way, skid steers don't go oops and get brand-new tree planted. So, uh, we've been asked about warranty regarding those trees. We're navigating that to see how many trees didn't make it over the winter and last year. We're also trying to remind residents, if you do have new sod, it's good to wire your trees, but also be conscious of how much you're watering them. Because we're seeing the trend of, sometimes they get overwatered, and that may kill them off too.
Okay, Julie mentioned we should use those bag things.
We've encouraged all the residents to, to get the bags, uh, to get a bag and throw that on there, and that would help too. So, uh, variety of different reminders that we've had for folks. Uh, the majority, the most popular tree is a variety of maples, and then we have some oaks. There's a little crabapple, it's a crabapple tree, and then I believe elm, right? This is the fourth one?
Elm, oak.
Maple, maple, and crabapple.
And then there's, um, Lyndon?
Oh, Lyndon, it might be a Lyndon. There's just a couple of those. The vast majority is maples, that's what people like. But we've tried to encourage and have a variety of trees, not just one type of tree. So, um, I believe also our staff has been looking, they've met with N D S U. I haven't seen her, I haven't heard a final determination of this yet. There were some concerns of Emerald, Emerald ashbore in Horace. N D S U was out, I believe, last week, taking some samples, looking at that. I have not heard that'll come out.
What is that?
The Emerald ashbore.
That bug that gets in and kills the ash trees.
Yeah, eats the bark away, so. So I haven't heard the determination of if it was determined we have it or not. I wouldn't be surprised, it's just a matter of time.
Yeah.
Like, what does that mean? Like, you get one, you.
It's a wipeout, yeah.
They wipe out all the ash trees.
And that helps with.
Sorry, I don't know much about tree bugs.
No, it's.
Well, the way they control it is they start taking out more ash trees just to try to prevent the bugs, or the, was it bugger or worm from spreading.
Yeah, it's like a beetle, and, yeah, they take off trees.
Like, you can see the beetle?
Yeah.
Like, are they big or little, or?
About.
What's the size?
Oh, Google it for you.
No, they're pretty small, Martin, they're, I locate it because I know your background. Well, interesting, yeah, so.
Size of your forearm.
So I'm gonna scream if I see one?
It's like a shiny four screen color, and, yeah.
Do you make D-shaped holes? Do you see a D-shaped hole?
No, I never want to see something.
It looks like, it looks like a grasshopper.
I am definitely afraid of grasshoppers.
Actually, yeah, good comparisons, grasshoppers.
Not for me.
A jewel beetle. Green, oop prestid, or a jewel beetle, native to northeastern Asia.
If I saw something like that, I would be screaming.
The key move on my list there, just a reminder, C Y grab sale is this weekend, May eleventh. If anybody has a grab sale, they want to be on the map that we kick out, folks.
Have we had a lot of people?
Uh, yeah, four didn't come out.
Nice, good.
That's normally a pretty popular weekend around here, so we're happy for that.
And then perfect timing for the city cleanup week.
Yep, that was my next one here, is the following weekend, May eighteenth. It, that Saturday, May eighteenth, is spring cleanup.
Have to have your stuff in the curb by when?
I would suggest you have it out the day before. If you get it out there a little bit earlier, well, if Waste Management has time, we'll encourage them to go by there. But things do disappear if you have it out there a day or two beforehand, so. Also, a, congrats, I'll, I'll break the ice here. Cory, congrats for being a grandpa, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then congrats to Matt. He is now on the United States Bowling Congress National Board, so. Yep.
Congratulations.
Exciting.
I just learned how to do the cradle spin, and I have no good at it.
So if you need bowling lessons, talk to Matt.
I've had the most improved, um, every year when I was on league, so.
That's all I have.
Okay. Let's see, portfolio reports, so we had our big meeting with Fargo and the sewer thing, you guys all heard about that. Been a meeting coming up with the B I A, now they're a home builder association, I'll meet with Bryce, conversation with her, and it's upcoming, so. Sarah, what do you got?
Not a whole lot, it's been a slow start. Got a chance to meet with Jim and, um, Brenton, and met with some of the city staff last week and had some good discussions. But rain has been hindering some things, but I have seen some equipment movement, and I have seen our local law enforcement, which made me happy, not just our patrol, but our overweight, obviously, commercial trucks. So I have been monitoring that pretty heavily, and, uh, we got somebody already. So I have been monitoring that pretty heavily and uh we got somebody already. So I was kind of thrilled with that because those are the people doing damages to our roads, right? So that's a good investment for us. Other than that, I don't have too much, just really looking forward to the season kicking off. We got a lot of work to do this year and we need the sun to shine to do it.
Sounds good. Naomi, what do you got?
Um I don't really have a whole lot of updates. However, I wanted to ask, did you, were you guys aware that the school bus route was being stopped in parts of town?
I had heard some rumors. I don't know what was true or what wasn't. I know that last year they stopped um for a period of time in my neighborhood because they didn't have enough drivers.
Right. So I had a resident reach out to me, um and I just wanted to run this by you guys. Maybe it's a conversation, maybe at another time we can talk about it. But um they said they are no longer gonna be getting bus services over here, behind, like in, over here. And I'm not quite sure if that's like a permanent thing or if that's like a maybe temporary, I'm not sure. However, now that Wall Avenue has been up and running, it's kind of like the same situation with the heavy traffic as over in your area. And they were wondering if it's possible to get like a blinking crosswalk light so the kids can walk.
Can walk to the elementary school.
Yeah, like at the front of the road?
Um somewhere, wherever the, where, like, there's a sidewalk by Adams.
Yeah, that's the one.
And then for them to be able to cross to go to the school. Um because I guess the traffic is really difficult for those little ones to be walking um across from Wall Avenue.
So we haven't closed out the Wall Avenue East project? Is that something you'd like to look at adding?
If the council would be okay with that, I just worry about these little kids walking around Wall Avenue. Um it is a busy road. It's a main road, so.
I'll have a proposal for you in two weeks.
Okay, that's perfect.
Cause we can put that in, if there's a sidewalk, you know, on the west side of the road.
You can uh, you can core it out and just put the post in there. And then they've made a bolt-on uh.
Mask?
I don't know what you wanna call it, that goes in the concrete.
Oh.
To hold the, but I think these are gonna have to have drilled in there because they're heavier signs with the lights on and everything. But uh my recommendation would be just like what we did on sixty-fourth or sixty-sixth and up in Softdale Farms where it's pedestrian-activated. The pedestrian-activated beacons weren't a real big thing when, two thousand fifteen, when we did the crossing by Casey's, so those flash all the time.
Yeah.
And the, the trend has been to go to ones that are.
The beep, yeah.
You push it and it goes, and the lights all up and.
Make sure it's low enough so the kids can.
Well, right. I mean, there's, there's standards that has to be, but, but that way, uh studies are showing that you don't lose the sensitivity, the sensitivity. You don't become immune to it, because it's always flashing.
Right, right, and that makes sense.
A lot, a lot more vehemently, a lot more aggressively than the other ones, yes.
Well, thank you. I would really appreciate it because Wall Avenue has become heavier and it's only gonna get heavier um with the development going on out there.
Especially if they're gonna do bus service over there. That was the whole purpose of that shared use path, was to get a safe place to walk. And then you can cut across in front of um post office. There's a shared use path there.
Yep, perfect. Thank you. I appreciate it. So you guys are on board with getting one set up?
I'll bring a proposal back in two weeks.
But I'll reach out to the contractor off Jason, Jason and our office reach out to them and we can change order then.
Awesome, thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, Jeff, yeah?
I don't have anything.
Jeff?
Um had a much-cogged meeting today around noon. Um discuss uh general topics, nothing of terrible importance for this group. Um from the H R side, we did have a new hire. It started at City Hall. Uh we do have a receptionist now. Um I encourage you guys to go in and just say aye. Um Aleah, I believe is her name. And um I did not, that is it.
Sounds good. All right, I'm gonna look for a motion to adjourn.
I, I'll make that motion.
Yeah, we make some motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we're done.